Is. Well, our so coming across the parking lot, but it sort of seems like most people are here.
There's a couple.
Okay. Um, we'll start with roll call and meeting minutes and then hopefully folks that are here for the public hearing will still hear all of it. Uh. We'll start with roll call, maybe start down there with David.
David Merrick, District Three, Peonya.
Matt Clark, District One, Delta.
Todd Queen, District One.
Liam Bronis, District Two, Service Street.
Lance Edmond, District Two.
Jacob Gray, District Three, North Fork.
Kate Arlington, District Three.
Sean Gardner, Delta County Planning.
Angela Reed, Delta County Planning.
Brittany Hating.
All right, uh, are there any changes to the agenda or additions that need attention? Um. Any member need to add anything? Oh. Okay, um, we'll move on to reviewing meeting minutes from May fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Recommendation from staff is to approve the minutes as presented. Uh, we'll need a motion and a second to approve and a vote.
Move to approve minutes for last meeting.
I'll second.
All right, uh, on paper, I.
I.
Although. No nays, okay. Um, we are going to move on to the public hearing for tonight. It is project number twenty-four dash zero five seven Davis. Um, I want to just go over kind of how the public hearing process is going to work. First, we're going to hear a presentation from the staff about the application. Uh, the planning commission members are going to have an opportunity to ask staff questions. Uh, then we'll allow the applicant to come forward and add anything else that they want to add. After that, um, we will open it up to the public. If you would like to speak about this hearing, please sign in on the clipboard at the kind of the side of the room. Uh, we'll use that as, um. As the order of operations for who's going to speak. I'd like to limit public comment to three minutes per person. Um, we want everyone to have a chance to speak if they want to, and we want to, uh, respect everyone's time. Um. And just as an overview, we are a recommending body to the Board of County Commissioners. This application, uh, we have the opportunity to approve, approve with conditions or deny that that is just a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The final hearing will take place at the Board of County Commissioners. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Sean to give us a staff report.
Thank you. We have a presentation up here. I apologize, you all have to kind of crick your necks over here to watch this, but, um, we'll be going through some slides. The first thing I wanted to bring up is that there have been a number of questions raised about the procedures and processing of this application. Um, so I want to explain kind of what the process it's gone through has been up to this point. The Davis application was received on August fifth of last year, so we're coming up on about eleven months ago. It is classified as an event venue in the land use code, which requires a limited use permit with notice. The review process for a limited use permit with notice is an administrative review process, meaning it doesn't have to go through a public hearing, uh, review process. But it also requires that notice be sent to, um, to adjacent property owners about the application. So that was done originally in November, November thirteenth last year. Um, the purpose of not subjecting, you know, uh, certain application types to a limited use or to the review process and or to public hearings is to make the process more efficient, uh, and expedited for the applicant and to reduce the volume of projects that have to be heard by the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners, uh, which, you know, can affect their efficiency and affects these projects that, uh, must get approved by the, the Board of County Commissioners and the experience of getting it through. So I'm just explaining that's why there exists a limited use permit with notice. And that's what this, this kind of an event venue falls into in the land use code. Um, the Davises have been complying with all the requirements to get the permit. It has been the view of staff that this project aligns with the master plan and meets the standards of the proposed land use code according, uh, or, um, according to the standards outlined. I elevated this to a conditional use permit on, and on May twenty-seventh, though, because of public comments in opposition to the venue. They were alleging that it, it might not align with the master plan or meet the land use code standards and that it may have material impacts on neighboring properties or public resources that are unusual in kind or degree due to the unusual context of the subject property, which is one of the conditions for elevating it to a conditional use permit and then taking it through public hearings with the planning commission and then a final decision with the Board of County Commissioners. Does that all make sense to everybody? So just wanted to explain that's the process and how we've wound up here, even though it's typically a limited use permit that doesn't require this kind of public hearing. Um, this application has been largely completed for a while, but has been delayed for the last several months as we've awaited the determination of whether or not a CDOT access permit would be required at, uh, Highway ninety-two intersection. That was finally resolved in May and then we made the determination to go ahead and elevate it and take it to the public hearing. You go to the next slide. So the subject property, I'm sure everybody in this room knows, is, uh, about a mile, um, southeast of Hodgkins and, um, or southwest of Hodgkins, sorry. And it's about nineteen point four acres and it's Zoned A twenty. Um, go to the site plan here. Existing, um, structures that were on the property before the application was a single family residence at three, three, zero, eight, four, J Road. The access to that house is, uh, from J Road on the west side of the property. It has an existing septic permit and it has an existing Rogers Mesa domestic water tap. The venue that's being proposed has a pending septic, uh, permit. It will call, I'll call the venue the barn. And, um, they have also approval from Rogers Mesa to use exist, the existing tap in the barn. And they're working with county engineering on access for the barn, which you can see to the north of the barn there off of J Road. Um, the barn is approximately a hundred and two feet by eighty-six feet, a total of about eight thousand, seven hundred square feet, eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two square feet. But that includes also a covered patio area with entrances and exits on the south, the east and the north. Those are marked in red up there on the barn diagram. Inside the barn, there's, uh, two, uh, get ready rooms for like wedding parties, restrooms and a food prep area with a sink, a fridge, but no stove, there's no cooking. And there's a bar staging area. And while I'm mentioning the bar staging area, um, the applicant has said that there will be no alcohol provided by the owner, but alcohol will be provided by the venue renters. Parking lot is in white there. It's not, there's ninety-three parking spots total, five eighty, ADA parking spots. It's approximately two hundred and fifty-five feet by a hundred and seventies or a hundred and sixty-seven feet. Next slide. Operation Business Plan and in, in summary, uh, the venue will be available for three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven days a week. Hours would be nine AM to ten PM. Hours can be adjusted for renters. Max capacity is a hundred and twenty people. These, this is from the applicant's business plan. Uh, the goal is to eventually host about fifty, fifty events in a calendar year. Music will be limited to inside the venue and there's no overnight accommodations. Regarding the agricultural and irrigation plan for the property, um, there's going to be approximately fourteen point three acres left in agriculture of the nineteen point four acres total. So that leaves, you know, five acres for the house, parking area and the, um, the event venue location. Uh, irrigation water will remain unchanged in the agricultural area. Uh, wastewater that is entering currently from the park, the property to its north across J Road, um, will enter from the same location, uh, through a culvert located under J Road. Um, the applicant will construct a culvert located under the proposed parking lot area to direct the wastewater to, uh, a manmade, the manmade pond that's kind of indicated in that orange triangle area. Uh, this, this pond has been inspected by Norfolk Water Commissioner and I'm going to mess up his name, Luke Reschke. Thank you. Y'all know Luke Reschke.
Yeah.
Figuring you probably do. With Colorado Divisional Water Resources, Commissioner Reschke, uh, stated that they have no concerns with the pond. Now you can go to the next, noise abatement. Um, this is an aerial view, uh, approximate distances of the surrounding houses. The, uh, I overlaid their site plan up there as you can see in that area that's, uh, got yellow strips with green dots indicates locations where they propose to put raised berms with trees and shrubs on the north, south and west sides of the property, um, to help with noise mitigation. The business plan states they'll keep music inside and that noise will remain below the statutory of fifty-five decibels. Um. The applicant submitted a fire emergency plan that includes, uh, discouraging straw bales in the venue, uh, fireworks in it or around the venue. Uh, address signs will be installed, viewable outside the venue. Um, two panic doors with exit signs above. Fire hydrant is located at the corner of the property. Fire extinguisher, extinguishers will be in the venue. Uh, there's also a recommendation to be put two staircases to the balcony area of the barn and first aid kit and AED machine provided. And then these plans, you know, have been agreed upon with the Hodgkins Fire Chief. Um, a lot of the public comments, um, there's a lot of different public comments, but a lot of them had to do with the traffic. And we weren't able to get this most latest traffic report into the, uh, packet before we had to post it. So we attempted to send that out to everybody that had provided comments into the PC. Um, but I wanted to go through a summary, uh, from the traffic engineer about some of the comments he, that he directly addressed from his traffic study. So, uh, first comment there, uh, is that the project would be a high, what does it say?
I don't know how to get the.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know how to get that thing out of the way. No, I haven't. Oh, there you go. A high traffic generator who will pose. Uh, I, I'm sorry to go into so much deal detail on this, but I think it's for the benefit of everybody didn't get to see this in the packet. Okay, so that's why we're going to go through this. The project would be a high traffic generator will pose danger to existing roads. Response from the traffic engineer is that traffic studies evaluate the peak hours of project and highway traffic during a project event. For this venue, the peak hour of inbound project trips would be different than the peak hour of outbound trips as follows. And then he lays out that the inbound peak hour, what, what he's saying there is before an event, they, they calculate this as all the traffic coming to an event, pretty much within the, the hour right before the start of the event. The inbound peak hours, uh, would be forty-eight vehicle, uh, trips averaging, well, let me get this straight. Inbound peak hours would occur in the one hour prior to the event's starting time. And this was assumed to be from four PM to five PM in the, in the traffic study report, which would be forty-eight vehicle trips averaging one new car every one point twenty-five minutes if you spread it out over the hour. Outbound peak hour, so as people leave an event or the, once the main ceremonies have ended, so to speak, it was assumed that, that it took the hours of seven to eight PM would be nineteen vehicle trips averaging, uh, one new car every three point fifteen minutes. On days of wedding events, there would be twenty-two hours with little to no project trips. Project trips meaning trips to the event. Uh, because peak traffic would occur in two separate hours of the day. Peak traffic will occur during, uh, one point two percent of the hours in a week, meaning the low frequency of hours per week with venue trips. Overall, the combination of low project trip volume and the low frequency of project trips means the project related traffic would not likely create dangerous conditions for existing road users. Uh, next one. The next comment is the county roads are not designed for the proposed amount of project trips. Again, project trips means trips to the event venue, you understand, right? Um. And, uh, and other traffic. The response for the end, from the engineer is that the county roads in this study area are two-lane rural roads with a relatively low speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour. The fact is that a rural two-lane highway has a two-way capacity of one thousand, three hundred and eighty vehicle trips per hour, seven hundred and thirty in each direction. The congestion levels are calculated in terms of the ratio of actual traffic volumes to road capacity. So the volume to capacity ratio measured congestion, uh, one, one point oh is considered congested. So, um, so that would be like thirteen hundred and eighty trips would be congested. The current estimated volume, uh, volume to capacity ratio on J Road is at point zero five percent. Five percent of its capacity is used. With the project's maximum traffic, the total volume to capacity ratio would be point zero nine, meaning ninety-one percent of the road's capacity would remain unused. Another comment was drunk drivers will be unable to navigate ninety-degree turns and, uh, steep shoulder drop-offs. The traffic engineer, uh, said there's no evidence to support this claim. Attendees, uh, often use designated driver, drivers or shuttles. These road features are common in this area. He also made a reference to some of you probably been to Palisade Fruit and Wine Highway up on Orchard Mesa outside Palisade, has similar roads with more traffic and drinking establishments, yet no abnormally high number of related crashes. The next is, um, the intersections of State Highway ninety-two have seen an increase in deadly accidents. This is from Skip Hudson, he used to work for CDOT for many years, so. Um, he said Colorado, CDOT provided crash data and information for the segment of the, uh, State Highway ninety-two near the study inspection. Uh, this data covered five years from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three. The facts show that they were, uh, there, there were a total of seven crashes during this period on average of, of one point four crashes per year. One of those crashes, uh, happened at a driveway. Uh, one fatal crash occurred at the intersection of thirty-three hundred Road. And, um, a driver attempted to pass a slowing, uh, vehicle and caused a head-on collision on Highway ninety-two. This crash was not related to the volume of traffic on Highway ninety-two. Next one. Um, the next comment, the project trips would increase traffic by eighteen hundred percent. In this, uh, his response here, he calculated, he says, the calculation of tr- traffic increase would be different for each road segment because the volume of existing traffic changes for each segment. So he broke out the segments here from J eighty Road to, uh, J eighty Road from the highway to thirty-three hundred Road. So just that little segment there, uh, recent peak traffic counts for four vehicles per hour. At event peak traffic, most, it's assumed that most traffic would be coming down that route uh, to the venue would increase it by forty-eight vehicles per hour. And then at thirty-three hundred Road, uh, from the highway to J eighty Road. So if you came in on thirty, on thirty-three hundred Road, the recent peak traffic counts are five vehicles per hour. And the event peak traffic would be nineteen vehicles, uh, an additional nineteen vehicles per hour. And then, uh, the next segment of road is J eighty Road from thirty-three hundred Road to J Road. So that's a very little short segment there. Nine vehicles per hour is the recent peak traffic counts. And the event peak traffic would add forty-eight vehicles per hour at, at the, at that peak hour, right before the event occurs. I hope this is making sense. Does it making sense or not? Kind of, okay. J Road, uh, from project access to J eighty Road Riverside Drive. Currently, recent peak traffic counts are at thirty-seven vehicles per hour. The event peak traffic, uh, would increase that to by forty-eight vehicles per hour. All right, um. Just two more and we're about done. Um. CDOT has expressed, this is a public comment, CDOT has expressed concerns about increased traffic at state highway intersections. Engineers' response, there have been many meetings with Delta County and CDOT about this project and how project trips affect the intersections on Highway ninety-two. Um. What's been proposed is the eliminating left turns in and out at the severely skewed intersection of Highway ninety-two and J eighty Road would improve traffic safety, you know, J eighty Road comes out kind of parallel. And so you got to really crane your neck back to look back, you know, to, yeah, to the east to see what's coming to pull out on the highway. So those left turns are dangerous. This has been an issue for many years. There's a traffic control plan for that section of the highway that's documented this for a long time. Um. Can the other, the other, um, conclusion is constructing the recommended eastbound right turn deceleration lane at the intersection of Highway ninety-two and J eighty Road. So having a turn lane off the highway to get on to J eighty Road would meet CDOT criteria. And it's been. That wasn't their preference. They would prefer to have a right turn lane at thirty-three hundred Road. But everybody likes J eighty Road and we use J eighty Road for a number of purposes. So we negotiated and they're okay with the right turn lane at J eighty Road. CDOT has verbally agreed to the conclusions and they will formally agree when they review the report and issue CDOT access permit. All right, last comment about traffic and then we can go to draft conditions of approval. Um. Yeah, it will be necessary to obtain private property along Highway ninety-two to construct the recommended eastbound right turn deceleration lane at the intersection of ninety-two and J eighty. It appears that there is plenty of existing highway right-of-way to construct a lane, although final highway design would be necessary to confirm this. Uh, minor adjustments to various geometric design factors could be considered to keep the construction in the necessary right-of-way and avoid the need for acquisition of private property.
Sorry, that's, that's my corner, there's not, there is.
We will, ma'am, we will keep a public comment until the, the allotted time, but you are welcome to stop.
All right, um, so these are draft conditions of approval. This is typical what we do with the planning commission. We, we, we provide conditions that would be, um, im- imposed on the permit to mitigate risks or impacts, uh, from, from a project. We propose these so that the planning commission kind of has a starting point and they can eliminate, modify or add to these conditions to make their recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. So these are a starting point and they're based off of the land use code or statute or public comments or things that we found in the review of the application. So the first one is that, uh, project twenty-four fifty-seven is approved. And we write it in this language so that, you know, when it, if it is adopted and approved and sent on to the Board of County Commissioners, it's written in a language that's ready to be used. So is approved for an event venue that can host up to fifty events one calendar year with the max capacity being one hundred and twenty people at the property located at their address there. Operations shall be in accordance with the approved plans and supplemental document, documentation to satisfaction of the Director of Community Development, including but not limited to their submitted business plan, submitted site plan, submitted irrigation and ag plan and noise plan and their submitted, submitted, uh, fire emergency plan. Any significant modification shall require an amendment to be considered by the planning commission and Board of County Commissioners. So if this were approved and conditionally approved and there were any changes, they'd have to come back through the planning commission, Board of County Commissioners to make those changes to the conditions. Number two, plans identified, uh, through the Colorado Noxious Weed Act and the Delta County Noxious Weed List is as undesirable and designated for management within the county shall be removed. Number three, operations shall take place on the property from nine AM to ten PM, Monday through Sunday throughout, throughout a year, the, the year. Number four, outdoor lighting shall be hooded or shielded, cut off so as to not cast light or glare onto adjacent properties or upwards in a manner that dilutes the night sky. Five, the operation shall not exceed noise thresholds set by state statute, maximum permissible noise levels, which limits commercial use to a sound level of sixty decibels during the hours of seven AM to seven PM and fifty-five decibels during the hours of seven PM to seven AM at twenty-five feet from the property boundary. Six, an access permit at Highway ninety-two will be required from the Colorado Department of Transportation for the development. Prior to operations, the applicant shall provide the county with a copy of the finalized CDOT access permit. Number seven, prior to operations, the applicant shall obtain final approval on an engineered onsite wastewater treatment system permit for the event venue. Number eight, prior to operations, the applicant shall obtain approval from the county engineer for the venue access. And number nine, prior to operations, the applicant shall obtain site construction approval according to the final approved site plan from county planning. And that concludes report.
All right.
Oh, sorry, recommend, yeah, so again, here we provide staff recommendation to the planning commission. They have discretion to choose otherwise. But what we are recommending is to find that project twenty-four fifty-seven Davis complies with the land use code for an event venue requiring a conditional use permit and approve project twenty-four fifty-seven Davis a conditional use permit for an event venue located at their address, subject to conditions.
All right, thank you, Sean. Um, I'm going to open it up to the planning commission to ask any questions, clarifying questions of the staff, uh, before we invite the applicant up. Um, I'm just gonna have work our way down the line each time. Commissioner Merrick, do you have any questions of staff?
This CDOT access permit, that's proposed and it's going to be required, I take it. Is this a cost that the applicant is going to incur or is it, okay? The, uh, wastewater pipeline, that's new, right?
The pipeline that would, it's in the blue there, they're going to the parking lot?
Yeah.
It'd be new, yes, that may install.
Pond is existing?
Um, it's kind of not, no. Absolutely not, it's absolutely not.
So that's a proposed pond, but the
It is.
The wastewater at this time enters somewhere on that corner. I've seen pictures of.
That's not what he did.
I can show, I mean, I can show you real quick, since I live right here. So it, it enters here and now there's a pipe that goes down this way. His junction box is here. And so it's, so it's changed from here. Um, instead of going under the parking lot, his junction box is here. Um, the wastewater flows in here, two ditches drain into there. And this is where it's flooding.
Okay, yeah.
I would remind the public that we will have an opportunity for the public to comment. Uh, right now, we're focusing on questions of the staff and the applicant, but if you wanna take notes about what you want. Like to add to the conversation, please do so at the appropriate time. Commissioner Merrick, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no. Not for staff.
Okay, Commissioner Clark, any questions for staff?
No questions for staff, thank you.
Me. Since this application technically falls under limited use, but you have moved it to conditional use, will it be required to meet? The requirements of a conditional use permit set forth in land use code or only the conditions of the limited use permit?
Of a conditional use permit, so the public noticing that. The board approval, the resolution, all that kind of stuff.
Right, Commissioner Roddick?
Well, I understood that the wastewater. Is, has been changed from where originally was. Is that okay with the ditch company?
I'll let the applicant probably answer that, but it's wastewater, it's tailwater that I believe that it's been approved. For to be put into the pond.
Okay.
Any further questions? Um, all right, Commissioner Enel.
I don't know, questions for staff.
Commissioner Gray.
A few for staff, um. The C dot. They were flagged because it was a twenty percent increase, is that correct, in traffic?
Yes, up at the, at the highway intersection. They, they measured that by vehicles per hour.
It was twenty percent just for this one venue.
On a vehicle per hour, um, measurement for the intersection, yes.
It was greater than twenty percent, correct? It's not per day.
It was not an average daily trip, yeah.
That's right. Yeah, I was curious why. It's like there's a line, how's it called that? And the application indicates property as part of a previous subdivision, I assume that has all been taken care of at the flat?
There is a, that's right, there was a, uh, plaque restriction on the property. There was a replat application and the, um, the lot owner and the subdivision. Find the plaque. That restriction was removed.
I see. Um, bathrooms?
There are bathrooms in the barn, yes.
There was. This is kind of a, maybe a further question for us of the PC and the staff, but. What is our protocol for neighborhood meetings? Is staff typically involved in leading the, the funeral?
No, but we don't. Usually, the way I understand neighborhood meetings are supposed to occur is really for the applicant to convene. Neighbors. And just them, staff's not usually present. We have been present in some of these event venues once because there's. There's been, you know, some emotions there and we just, and also they've been taking place at county facilities. And so we, you know, been there to help and make sure that. Try not to participate. It's really just supposed to be neighbors to neighbors.
Are there any like, is it recording or with, or anything?
No, but the, the applicant is supposed to. Give some kind of report of like what was discussed and who was there.
Um. It seems like there were two, there was two different traffic studies. Was, was the difference going from a level one to level two or was the second one just to. Signs, questions being able to, um. It's like a signal was far more to do a lot more hours a day than that.
Well, there's the.
Level one versus level two.
Yeah.
The level one was, the level one was used to determine that it hit the trigger. So that was the initial, there's usually less data.
Yeah.
And once it triggers it, then it steps into that next one.
There was, there was also a modification of the max capacity attendance of the, uh, venue. And then there was, um. There is some deliberation over what assumption was going to be, um, chosen, you know, to, to make.
Yeah.
Or if that was going to be required at all, because the county is a little implicated in this set of intersections. There's a lot at stake there, so.
Um, and then the last question, it seems like the parking lot, the original design was based on like the original. Like more, more people, it seemed like the business plan knocked that down. Should the parking lot reflect? That max capacity, if it is truly that two and a half people per car. I would think a parking lot more at the forty to fifty range would make more sense than a ninety car, but.
I'll let the applicant maybe speak to that. I mean, we have a minimum requirement, but not necessarily an act.
And that's all my questions for staff.
All right, um. A question about water. According to our staff report, Rogers Mesa Domestic Water Company has indicated they've approved. This use, uh, in communication with county, however, we did receive as part of the packet. Part of the public comment, comment from board of the Rogers Mesa Domestic Water Company indicating they had. They maybe felt like they approved this. For a use that was maybe different than what would, what the reality is. That public comment mentioned they thought that the usage would be about six thousand gallons per. Month, um. Is there any, I, I know they just kind of have to make that determination. Has, has their word been final? They still have the opportunity to kind of weigh in. Where are we at with domestic water use and whether their kind of assumption of gallons for this sort of venue is, is a reasonable assumption?
My understanding is that their determination is final. Um, but I am aware of that communication. Brittany was the planner for most of it, so. I don't know if you have anything else to say about that.
I think, um, there was some comments that were directed to them. Um, then the water company kind of took a look. At it, took a step back and was listening to all the public comments come in. Um, to which then they had reached out to the Davises. Um, they were more worried that it wasn't aligned with their ag, ag rural tourism, um. Process, meaning that they had to have ag, um, along with what they were doing, um. So the Davises explained that they were still going to do ag on the remaining prop, um. Side of the land along with the event center. Um, they cannot use that water for ag purposes, um. It is only solely to be used in the barn event at it.
Um. Mike, I had a question about that neighborhood meeting, but maybe I'll address that to the applicant, um. In determining with that traffics, the traffic issue and determining which intersection should be used or where that turning lane. Is supposed to be, do you know, I, I should have looked this up beforehand, but is the predominant directions from Google Maps and Apple Maps. The J eighty road, is that why that intersection was chosen? Um, or is there a way to kind of like help direct traffic towards the most safe?
I, I, I don't know the particulars there in terms of like if that's where Google Maps directs people to or not. I, I kind of assume it may be. What was more at issues, thirty-three hundred road, um, is not at ninety degrees with, uh. Hi- Highway ninety-two, so if they were to be approved. It would be more than just a turn lane. It would actually have to, we'd have to kind of adjust thirty-three hundred road to come at more of a right angle. Um, and it's a very natural road to go off on, I think. Does everybody pretty much go down J eighty road and then you're coming out? Yeah. So I, I think for that reason, it was very preferred.
Yeah. Um, and the, there's talk of. You know, putting it in that right turn deceleration lane. Was there any talk about a left turn lane or? Uh, discussion of where the, where the majority of the traffic would be, you know, eastbound or westbound? Where people will be coming from?
Yeah, the traffic study has a, a way of, you know, um, developing a scientific approach to. Estimating, you know, where the majority of traffic be coming from, be coming from the west on Highway ninety-two. Um, and the left turn business is, was, was complicated. One of the proposed ideas was to. Adjust J eighty road so that it came at more of a, you know, ninety degree to the highway. C dot didn't approve that. Um, they prefer the adjustment maybe made at thirty-three hundred.
Yeah.
But they allowed the concession to have a right turn lane at the, at J eighty.
Uh huh. I just would think that the, the left turn would be the more dangerous approach there, um. And hard to say whether most people are gonna be coming from. Delta or Hoshkis and Peonya.
Right.
Um, who knows? Uh, I think those are. My questions for staff. Um, there were a fair amount of public comments worried about the use of alcohol on the property. Um, and the application indicates that they'll require the, um. Whoever's renting the venue to provide alcohol. Um, there's some concern that this kind of leaves like a. Uh, an ambiguous liability issue, um, with the event venue not serving alcohol themselves and also not. Being able to cut people off. Was there any discussion of a liquor license and someone on, on? Property that's trained as a bartender and in legal laws, you know, legal serving laws? Um, or has that been a part of the conversation at all?
I don't believe we've discussed that at all.
Uh, all right, that is my question. Um, let's have the applicants come up and we'll give you an opportunity to, uh. Speak to the project, if there's anything you'd like to add. Uh, and then we'll have an opportunity for the commission members to ask you specific questions, maybe about the, the property and some of the things that come up already.
Hey, hello, my name's Ken Davis, my wife Patty. There, I guess I start right away with the wastewater because that changed after I drew this up. That the, uh, I was gonna go diagonal across the parking lot. But I realized with a foot diameter pipe, I was gonna have to have so much fill in the parking lot. Burying that pipe. It made more sense to follow the existing ditch. That was already there. So it follows along J road down. And then at the bottom of the parking lot across, that is the existing ditch that it always had followed. Um, people had talked about, uh, that being a natural wetlands. There was nothing natural about it. It was, uh, there was ribs in the field going diagonally one way. And when the, uh, slope changed, the ribs went another way and it was not irrigated. That's how it was irrigated. So there was nothing natural about that at all. Um, so I did change the direction of the wastewater. Um. It still enters and exits at the exact same place that it did before we bought the property. It's, the only difference is now it flows through the pond. Um, there is a drain in the pond, uh, that is at, uh. Grade level, which is required by the water resources. And, um. Uh, where am I going with that? Uh, basically, the water flows through the pond. You don't retain it anymore than just having a reservoir for the sprinkler system. For the grass and the shrubs of the venue. And, and the house, uh, yard. So that's the purpose of the wastewater. We will also be channeling the excess. Irrigation water that we have that used to, uh, water that section where the, uh. You see it's yellow and green, that whole area is about two acres worth. And that's, uh. That's gonna be, uh, watered with the. Uh, where the, and the pinkish lines, that continues on to the whole rest of the property. That's about. Approximately seventeen acres, uh, that we're still farming. We're only taking, uh, approximately three acres. It's a little under twenty acres, so I'm saying. Uh, it's approximately three acres with the parking lot and the venue area. Uh, and the rest is still farmed. That's why it's considered ag tourism. Because we're bringing in people for the venue. That's the tourism part of the ag is the seventeen acres that's still being farmed. So. Um. I think that pretty much covers what I wanted to cover on that. I do have a. Actually, I prepared that. Excuse me. It covers a lot of stuff, uh, that is basic information that's already been covered on some. But I also wanted to relet some of the misinformation, so. Post it online if we're just not accurate. I figure if I don't, uh, relet that, people will take it as fact. Cause it's something. So anyway, first of all, this is a wholesome family home business. We've been. We grew up, I'm a wife who grew up in Colorado. I've been here the majority of my life. We lived in Montrose. And it's not a party barn. It's not a brothel. It's not a strip club. Not too much more wholesome you can get than a wedding venue. Uh, it'll benefit not all the businesses maybe, but the majority of businesses in the area. Uh, some of the people here won't see the exact benefit because they may be not the. Business owners, but it'll benefit caterers, florists, restaurants, hotels, gas stations. Galleries and gift shops and even realtors will benefit. Uh, the size of the barn is eighty-six feet by a hundred and two feet. Uh, no onsite kitchen, no, or camping. Like that, uh. As far as alcohol, the renter will, uh. We put in the, uh, we'll be putting the contract that. Um, beer and wine is allowed for them to serve. Uh, they will have to provide. Shuttle service or a designated driver if need be. All guests will also, uh, as anywhere else, have the personal responsibility. Hand designated drivers, we do recommend. Uh. All the water for the venue is basically bathrooms. There is a joint bathroom for all the guests. And there is a separate bathroom for the girls get ready room, separate bathroom for the boys get ready. There's also a sink and the caterers staging prep area where they, they don't prep the food. They bring it in already done. They spread it on a table, they need to wash their hands. That's what that is for. Let's see, wastewater, I covered that. The pond, we have, uh, met all the guidelines with the state water resources. They can now look. Pictures, discussed it. Uh, the noise, we will follow all the state set, um. Levels. The speakers will be indoors. Uh, we'll be installing berms, trees shoved, shrubs and privacy fence. To mitigate some of the noise. We don't expect there will be a lot because the speakers will be indoors only. Uh, we did visit the sheriff's department and according to the sheriff's department, there have been no complaints. For any wedding menus that they know of for rally or noise in the past. Dust, there should be zero dust. The parking lot, we were planning on using crust, fresh ass vault. Uh, and packet. There will be no exposed dirt, so there shouldn't be any dust. Lighting, we'll be following all the guidelines set forth by the state and county. Uh, headlights, uh, there's been a comment that people are worried about the headlights shining in the houses. We were, uh. Either gonna put trees, but we, we pretty much decided on a privacy fence. Which should catch all the light. There should be no light shining out of the property. Uh. We did have one property owner say that he was gonna shoot any dogs that straight onto his property. Uh, most people don't bring their dogs to weddings, but some people do. We'll advise them accordingly, let them know that. Keep your dog on a leash. We do have uh, issues with some uh. Uh, well, that's, that's what we would say. The eighteen hundred percent increase in traffic, that number was based on outdated information. And it is kind of misleading because uh, the traffic is. Really based on a certain time before the wedding and after the wedding. And we, he already covered that. Uh, many ninety-degree turns on dangerous roads. From highway ninety-two, there's only two ninety-degree turns before you get to. A uh, turn that has a stop sign, and there's two more. Event. Uh, all these roads are thirty-five miles an hour, except when you make the turn. From the stop sign, there is a sign that says twenty miles an hour with picture of turns for the road. Uh, it's the same as it's always been. People have been navigating these roads for years. I can't understand why there's an issue there. Um. People were completely, this is where I'm gonna rebut a few of the things. People said this has been fast-tracked. Uh, they haven't had a chance to talk about it with anybody. We applied for this almost a year ago, I think in August. Uh, is when we applied. If that's fast-tracking, well, it is. Uh. And a statement has been made, ninety percent of the uh, residents of the area oppose this venue. I say that speculation, we do not believe it. Uh, property values will drop. That's definitely speculation. We do not believe that either. I think they'll go up. Wildlife will leave. Definitely untrue. We still have turkeys, deer, ox, coyote, we got, we got a local bear. Uh, they're hanging around. They're still there. Uh, we had a post claiming that we advertise, bring your own liquor. That is definitely untrue. I would say that is definitely a lie. Uh, we had a post claiming. This is not a small venue. This is a commercial venue from corporate uh. People from New York, definitely untrue. Uh, they claim the barn size was a hundred and forty-two feet by two hundred and forty-five feet. That's about four times the size it is. Our venue is eighty-seven hundred feet and a little bit more. And that would be thirty-four thousand feet. Several other uh, things have been stated online. Uh, that were lies that are basically uh. No one's business but our own and uh, don't really deserve a response. Appreciate that. That's my fact sheet. Happy to answer any questions.
Alright, we'll go down the line again with Commissioner Merrick. Do you have any questions of applicants?
I do. Um. Since we have the uh, site plan up there, you're now talking about a privacy fence?
Yes.
Where would would the, can you just step up and show, would it encompass the entire parking lot or just certain sides of it?
Yeah, I would uh. Probably, we would go from our gate, uh, just because we like the look of it, we would go up. And we gotta stay thirty-five feet in from the edge of the road.
Okay.
For the county right away. So that's why this uh, parking lot is that far in from the road. The fence that's there is probably way over here. So there's gonna be a fair amount of uh, land that's just not being used. So yeah, we would go up to the corner and over to right around in here.
Okay. And this would be, how high would this fence be?
Uh, probably be about seven foot uh, from our driveway to the venue or to the parking lot. And I expect probably, oh, probably ten feet the rest of the way.
Okay, so then we would have to put that as a condition, an additional con- condition of privacy fence?
I expect that that would also, it would keep people from uh, seeing all the cars. It would be a benefit that people complained about having to see a parking lot. Uh, that would be a considerable expense, but we would do that for the uh, to appease neighbors.
Okay. Um, you can go sit down if you like. Um. The other question I have on this fire mitigation plan, uh, I think the language was. Uh, discourage use of fireworks.
We don't want fireworks.
I think there should be a prohibition of any fireworks. I would just.
Yeah, it's a wood barn.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, I don't see why you would need that, so.
When I went down, when we went down and talked to the fire chief, that was his words, were discouraged. So I, I can rewrite that and put prohibit.
We can amend it.
And that, that would also be in the rules for the the venue.
I'm sure he would like that even more.
Um. Now, there's a concern about drunk drivers. I don't quite know how to approach this, but if, are are, is there somebody? From the, I guess it's you folks unless you have employees, that are gonna keep an eye on these folks because. If if the the renter is reckless or careless with. The alcohol consumption, who's gonna stop them?
Uh. Well, we don't have too much experience with other venues, just that our son got married last year. And we have been looking at their contract that he had signed. And uh, pretty much they were required to have insurance. They were required to. Uh, have people that are of age uh, with bartender experience that would serve. Uh, that would be probably the point right there, the person serving. Would be the one, just like a bartender at any bar, would be determining.
But I mean, some people could just have coolers of beer. Nobody's really paying attention. Uh, that, I guess, I don't have a solution. I'm just coming up with scenarios that maybe could be addressed.
Well, neither my wife or myself drink. We don't drink, we don't smoke, we don't drug, we're boring people, what can I say? But uh, other people do. And uh, I would say. People have a tendency to drink when they do everywhere else. Uh, even the. The way the sheriff put it to me is it would be considered similar to a family barbecue or a.
Yeah.
Or reunion where you would have a large amount of people and some people would.
I, I'm just suggesting it might make. The neighbors feel more comfortable if there's somebody monitoring in some form or another.
We do live on, wait, excuse me, for interrupting. We do live on the property. There is a chance, a possibility. That we could. Walk over and kind of observe and see if things are under control. If they're not, there is a. In the, I've looked at several of the. Um. Renter contracts. And some of them state that if it gets out of control, they can cut it off right then and require everyone to leave.
Right.
So if we notice that there's a lot of commotion out there, it's a short walk from the house to the venue. We can go out and observe if we decide that, yes, they're getting carried away with their alcohol. And cut it off and say, you, you have so much time, shut it down and go.
Well, I, I just think that's something to consider. I don't really have an answer at this time. Um. I know similar venue in a similar situation. An area such as this, neighbors were concerned about these issues. And in that case, the venue shut down at nine at night. I'm just suggesting perhaps nine, nine o'clock at night, the venue shuts down. People can clear out and be gone by ten. I don't know if you have any strong feelings on that or not, but I think that makes a lot more sense. In an area like this with neighbors, it's basically rural residential in some form or another.
I would love to research that a little bit. I think uh, the ones that my son, I use him as an example because he just got married last year. And he did check a fair amount of venues. And uh, I would like to be in line with pretty much what the other venues are allowing. As far as the time, ten o'clock, I believe is what that was. I wouldn't say we're opposed to it, but I would like the opportunity to. Uh, to see if that's the case with the others.
Okay, um, I don't have any other questions for the other.
Thank you, David. Commissioner Clark, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do not, thank you.
Alright, well, down there, Commissioner Queen.
I can't remember if you were mentioning this with your fact sheet or if it was part of what you presented in their business plan, but there was something to the effect of. And I think it's part of your contract where you, where you will ask if they are going to be serving alcohol, that they also provide responsible drivers. Is that? Well, they didn't contractually obligated.
Yes, they signed the contract. That's, that's part of, that's in the contract.
Okay, great. Um, I think the only other question I've got, I had a question about the surfacing on the parking lot. You answered that. Will there be any fencing between the event venue and your agriculture operation?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, that one isn't any more than a uh, a pole fence, a steel, a drill pipe. Uh, three rail uh, fence.
Something that will keep livestock out and. I have no other questions.
Alright, thank you, Todd. Commissioner Brana, do you have any questions with the applicant?
No, it's just them.
Alright, Commissioner Enholm.
Good evening. Uh, thanks for being here. I guess one of the questions is on the design of the barn. The access points in and out, where are those doors gonna look like? And are they gonna be able to be propped open when you talk about the music being kept inside?
There, there's panic doors and, you know, they won't be propped.
So we're not, not big barn doors that could be opened up?
The barn, there are, there is a big barn door on, I don't know what the site is.
Yeah, the east side of the building, which is the right side, is considered the front of the barn. It's gonna have about fourteen foot tall by twenty foot barn sliding doors. And uh, there's gonna be a double door, uh, well, stay on the front first. Be a panic doors and if you're familiar with the panic door, it's got the bar across it, so all you gotta do is push that. So it's gonna be one of those on each side of the big sliding door. Uh, the uh. Downside of the entrance, it's not there to me, but is the outdoor seating uh, for eating. And we've been back and forth on what we're gonna do for doors there. Not a movable wall and uh, basically accordions. And leaves it all open, was gonna be what we're gonna do. Depends on the cost, because they're very expensive. If we don't do that, it'll probably be three separate uh, sliding doors that will overlap each other. So they'll have like three fourteen-foot openings on that side. The back will have a double uh, double door panic door that goes into the cater preparation area. And on the upper side. Uh, of the barn is the uh. Get ready rooms for the boys and girls. They all will have the exterior uh, doors. Also panic doors uh, on those rooms.
I guess the, the reason I bring that, I'm just concerned about the amplified sound, I mean, out of those larger doors that those are propped.
Yeah, we.
So.
We don't, uh, I don't envision them being propped open. I don't know why they would be, they would be open. Uh. Uh, it wouldn't be locked, for sure.
Yeah.
As as for the uh, fire official, the chief, he's coming from us and. They will not be locked. We don't have a cap. Propped open.
Right. Then uh, I can circle back uh, on the comment about the alcohol. Have you considered? Uh, use supplying the server? Uh, to control that, that's, that's my biggest.
I.
Concern is.
It's, it's in the, it's in the uh, contract, the renters' contract, which they have to sign. That they will provide someone that is. Older, above drinking age and has bartending experience.
They will be unpaid also. What uh, the wedding that my son had, uh, they had a tip jar. That uh, in the end of the night, it helped. The people that were, I don't know if they were asked to be there, they volunteered to be there. But they, they ended up getting compensated by a tip jar.
I guess my concern, I'm just leaving my concerns that you're leaving that to people that are renting the venue. Versus you having somebody that controls that. And that's a, that's a huge concern. For me. Okay.
We could consider it.
Yeah, we consider it. Uh, we don't wanna be too involved with their wedding. As far as I'm concerned, the alcohol would be great. I don't drink, I don't care.
Uh, and then, and the business plan, you mentioned the hours being nine to nine in the morning till ten at night? But it got the caveat, can be adjusted to meet needs. What does that mean?
If, if the uh, party needed to get in to set up earlier. They felt that they needed to get in, maybe they came from a long ways. They got in the night before, they wanted to come in and set up for their wedding. It's in the afternoon. We would open it at whatever time was convenient for them, as long as this noise is kept down. There will not be any music when they're setting up. But they like to come in and decorate, so I would say if they wanna come in early, that's what.
Nothing to do with the actual events itself, it's that up and prop of that. Looking that, if somebody wanted to stay there till midnight.
No.
Making it, okay.
They have to leave by ten.
I'd like to add, uh, that when you rent for just Friday. Uh, you're allowed to come in Thursday to set up. And you're expected to come in Saturday to clean up. And the morning have to be done by ten o'clock uh, the day after cleaning up.
Okay, I'm, I'm more concerned about adjusting the hours of the event itself. Thanks, just for thinking, good question for now.
Alright, Commissioner Gray, any questions?
We entered the testing for musical customers. Um, do you have any fire suppression failed?
Um, no, we asked the uh, fire chief about fire. I told him I was planning on having plenty of fire extinguishers. They're about fire extinguishers. People don't know how to use them anyway. What he was concerned about is a fire hydrant, which is at the corner of the property. So he was very happy about that. Uh, fire suppression means like sprinklers. Uh, wasn't planning on that, no.
And then the hydrant, is it at the corner of the parking lot?
Uh, it's, okay, if J road goes down and does a ninety-degree turn, it's right on that corner. So it's on the corner of the property on the south, or in the east, east. Do you know what that distance is to the, from the hydrant? I don't, off the top of my head.
Um, is it right, right here, is the, neat?
Yes.
Right there, on this side though.
Right, yeah.
Fire chief knew where it was and he.
Exactly.
He was very.
He was very happy about that.
Um.
We did offer that would have been. He says we're only worried about the hydrant.
Um, you kind of answered this, but what, what is the management structure? Um, it sounds like you're going to be having all trucks.
Yes.
It's, yeah, the trucks are like, bias, it's pages long.
Yeah. Um. For staff, should, I'm sure engineering is weighed in, but should the county consider any more signage? With the increased usage, you know, there's the twenty mile an hour with the curvy signs, but maybe some kind of event. signage. Maybe just. Good idea, we haven't discussed that, county engineering. Maybe just flag it, suggest it to Tim. Okay. Um. Don't feel like you need to answer this, but I'm curious for our, you know, education, uh, what was the cost of your um, traffic study?
We're approaching nine thousand.
For, for just the traffic?
He gave me a, a figure of his max cost that it could end up to. Depending on if I had him go through every stage. We weren't gonna have him go through every stage, but the further along we got, it appeared that. Uh, we even went above because um. C dot wanted to close J eighty. They said that is going to be closed. And we took it upon ourselves, we don't want it closed. We started a petition. We visited several of the neighbors behind me. Uh. Give them didn't go very well. Give them didn't go very well. Uh, we did explain whether you're for or against the barn is one thing, if we really don't want G eighty closed. And, uh, we ended up getting about ninety signatures. Everyone likes that intersection, it'll cost more for us. To use that intersection than thirty three hundred road. But we feel it is justified because it just makes sense, it's it's straight off the road. And, uh, just couldn't understand why they wouldn't consider it impressed. And they said, well, I guess we will consider it.
Yeah. Um, those are my questions.
All right, thank you, um, thank you for being here and thank you for your. Uh, compliance so far and your thoroughness of your application, you have considered a lot of things. I want to ask you a couple of questions about the major neighborhood concerns. Um, I guess my first question is about the neighborhood meeting, um, were there any changes made to your plan or application? As a result of that meeting or neighborhood concerns?
Not really, we were pretty much, uh, pretty thorough before the meeting.
Um, the noise issue understandably is a concern, um. I don't know how to fully answer this, but I don't think any of us really. Know or can comprehend what fifty five decibels at twenty five feet from the property sounds like, and if that is within kind of normal wedding venue. DJ and band usage, uh, maybe this is a question for Everett, have you had other complaints? Or have you gone out and tested decibel levels at other comparable venues?
So at at this time, what we have is because the wedding venue has become more prevalent. Um, I have recommended, and I do have a decibel meter in my office. Uh, there are certain conditions for your decibel readings, it also has to be done at certain places. Also, the wind changes those factors. Um, but the state lines it out very clearly. And we're copying the state, and again, we recommend. I recommended for another venue that they could do their own testing by the same decibel meter I did and keep it locked. And that way they can say every hour they will. Get a quick check, but again, that's that's also not on our condition kind of scenario of the enforcement side. That's how I would adjust it, that's why I purchased a meter, because none of us. If if everyone tried to go out and say what fifty five decibels is, no one would hit the same mark. And it would not even be consistent.
Um. I had one thing that we're having. One speakers that the DJ can plug into, they will have a max level set.
Okay.
Already.
Great, that was a question is how you were gonna kind of help enforce that with your guests and vendors, so. It'll be speakers you provide that have kind of a maximum volume available.
Let me load that in this one year last night.
Okay, um, and then I think Lance's question about the doors being open or closed is a valid one. One question is whether the barn will have ventilation or air conditioning that I feel like will. Be a big determination about whether guests wanna prop the doors open or shut, I know it gets very hot on wedding dance floors, um.
Well, I I did like where my son got married, it's sort of. Logstock and barrel, they had this really big air conditioner, portable on wheels. They did have it at one end, and it it kept it pretty comfortable.
Um, yeah, just more of a kind of consideration in your planning, I guess, um. Yeah, the alcohol issue, I think, you know, people keep coming back to this, I. I don't know that we can really change your business proposal at this point, uh, I don't know if. Obviously be interested in it, but it it does seem to be kind of one of those those pinch points, um. I, but I do think a lot of other venues operate in the same same way, um. Yeah, I'm a little stumped as well, how to address that. How to address the neighborhood concerns, how to make sure people feel that they are going to be safe in their neighborhood. Um, I think for me, one of the obvious answers would be for you to provide a bartender. Who is knowledgeable and legally required to uphold, you know.
Not sure.
But but I think you would be, you would be required to have a liquor license at that point. Yes, be a kind of another, a different business plan, I'm not sure within this meeting we can change that.
I would like to point out that. People go all sorts of different places all the time, it shouldn't be any different. People do, uh, have a personal responsibility. Uh, they're our designated drivers, we require that a shuttle be available. You think we are addressing that?
And then in your fact sheet, you said only beer and wine will be allowed. Uh, I don't believe your application business plan specifies beer and wine. Would you be open to that being an additional condition, just a fully written out condition, okay? I'll I'll go back and read through it and just see. See if we need to add that, but, uh, I do think that is one way to also limit.
Alcohol content, uh, we're not having. Most weddings aren't, but like a bar where you go to get intoxicated, I do not believe that.
We've been to different weddings.
There's always a few.
And also, I I might want to mention, on some of the, I've gone through. Few of the contracts from different venues, and I'm trying to get more to go through so that I can put ours together. It states that, um, in one of them, that no. Drugs are allowed. And if there are drugs found, it's shut down. And it's closed and they're gone. And authorities will be notified.
All right, uh, I think that is all of my questions for the applicants, again, thank you for.
I have one.
Oh, sure, yeah, Commissioner Queen.
With your home station to the fire chief, did you guys discuss, uh, the the access to the property for their, like, any of them? They need to get a fire truck in or anything like that?
Yeah, they didn't necessarily talk about the entrance, but, uh. Uh, we will have a separate address. The barn, even though we aren't subdividing the barn off the property, it will have its own address, and that's county regulation. Uh, we will have, uh, uh, address markers, um. They didn't really.
Get talk about if there was a fire and they came in with their fire trucks and blocked that entrance to the venue. How would people get out? And so we have access through our, where the house is and out our driveway, and we told them that that would be available. And so that's, yeah.
Do you know what the width of that primary entrance will be?
Right now, uh, seeing it was just an ag entrance when we moved in. And at the end of the fence, there's two six inch posts that, uh, for stability on the fence. For us to get our equipment in and out that we're, uh, and to, uh, work on it, we pulled out. Two of the posts, it's probably thirty five feet. I'd say at least thirty five feet across.
Okay.
Yeah, we will have, uh, we need to, uh, work on the entrance. Uh, as per the county regulation, to get the access. We will, we have to put a culvert in, we haven't done that yet because we had big equipment coming in to do the, uh, cement. And the pumpers. So that's. I was planning on really just leaving it the way it is. It's extra wide already, I wasn't gonna make it smaller.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, just one other thing, we did bring the, uh, builders of the barn, that can give you any information on the barn itself, if you're interested.
And the history of it.
Yeah, they came from Indiana, they tore it down.
That is all we need, yeah, if you wanna take a seat, um. We are going to open up public comment for this hearing. The way we're gonna do that is I'm gonna collect that sign in sheet, we'll just go down the sign in sheet. If you would like to make comment, after I call your name, you're gonna come up to the table. Announce your name and your address for public record. And then each, uh, member of the public who would like to speak will have three minutes to address the commission. Please do your best to address us as commission members, not the applicants. Um, we won't be having any back and forth conversations about what is true or answering questions, please address us. Uh, if we do have follow up questions, we will have an opportunity to do that. Uh, I wanna acknowledge that there are some folks on Zoom. Um, so after we go through the sign in sheet. Uh, I will also give the the folks that are online the opportunity to make comment if they would like. Uh, again, let's respect all of our time, um, and we will start with Ron Smith.
I'm Smith, I live at three two nine eight eight J eighty road. Uh, we've lived there since two thousand and four. I've got seventy three acres, my south boundary turned this property. There are several things that need to be made aware of. The track, traffic coming off J eighty road. Does not slow down, the traffic probably hits fifty to sixty miles an hour coming off the highway. So I would be a fan of closing J eighty road, that was when the. C dot had meeting and talked about. The other thing that's going on there. I loaded a couple title here, I load cows out on the semi. I load stock tretters out on J eighty road there. I have tractors loading hay and that that stuff off J eighty road. Off of the shoulder there. So the traffic has not been a problem with the current people that's on there, could be in the future. Since I'm gonna be short on time, I'm gonna jump to that site plan there. Where he's saying that that is not. A problem, that is a natural drainage where that blue line goes. That property where he was talking about irrigating from the different directions. That's because the natural drainage runs right about where that blue line runs. On that north west corner. On the north side of the highway or the road there. That borrowed ditch is full of water right now. Because the drainage of that wastewater that comes off of my place. Is not being taken away from there. Other problems I have with that. Is. About two weeks ago. We had somebody come around that corner, go off the road and go into that other there. Mister Davis went out there and pulled him out with the backhoe and did not report it. It'll be recorded, the state patrol, they did come back out. And eventually caught the guy, the guy came back by and they caught him. I have had five accidents. That has taken my bench out there. In the last ten years. So I know the traffic is bad there.
All right.
It will take out fences.
All right, thank you, Mister Smith, um, we will take those comments into account. Uh, and I'm going to call up Lori. Faulkner.
My name is Lori Faulkner, I'm at thirty three zero five nine, and also have thirty three zero six three J road. We have thirty three acres, we farm hay. We now just have horses, our kids are grown, my son rides out on that road. And he trains horses. Davis will charge customers if they do not do cleaning up. Uh, adequately for the barn. Why not spend some money for someone to monitor the liquor? That's a huge issue, and there are, uh, eighty. Three percent of the neighbors in that area are against this, Danny. Fire extinguishers, smoking onsite, what's what's going to happen with that? How are they going to see if people are using drugs onsite? How are they going to monitor that if they're not monitoring liquor? Noise has been an issue, they get up at five twenty, five thirty in the morning. They run heavy equipment, I called Mister Davis myself personally, I called the sheriff's department. And he did nothing to correct it, he gets up at five twenty, five thirty and runs heavy equipment, there's no consideration for his neighbors. I spoke to C dot today, I spoke with Brian Killian, he made it very, very clear that he did not tell the Davises that he was closing J eighty road. The Davises went around and and got, uh, had a petition signed by many, many people, ninety some people. Oh, by telling them falsely that C dot was closing J eighty road, and that is untrue. We'd like to know if the balcony doors are going to be open. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Um, we will have an opportunity to address the applicants to, um, ask questions about some of these things. And we're not gonna do a back and forth right now, but we appreciate your comments.
Thank you, we appreciate the time.
All right, Clayton Faulkner.
Clayton Faulkner, thirty three oh five nine J road. I grew up in this quiet rural community, helping on cattle drives, watching sheepdogs, herding sheep down the road. My training with horses will be significantly impacted with the increase of the noise and activity due to how sensitive the horses are. I'm sure if any of you have worked with horses, you know how sensitive they can be. I will not be able to safely ride my horse to Taco Hut or down to the arena to do more extensive training in certain events. We are able to hear the neighbor's kids all the way down the road, laughing and playing. How will this noise, that close with all the music and everything else, and all those people talking and laughing? How will that affect everything else? The Davises labeled their event under agritourism, yet what are they doing to actually contribute to agriculture? Hardly anything, they fenced off a good portion of their field and tore up the other half. They haven't taken care of the hay nor cut it, when everybody else has cut all their fields, bailed it and took in it off. They rely on local ranches and the farms to play off the agritourism aspect to promote their business. Now, if there's no one to actually sit there and monitor the alcohol and the drugs, what are they gonna do about underage as well? Because kids still come to weddings, that all still occurs, so what are they gonna do for that? This will not be the community that I grew up in, African's venue is up and running. I'm sure they'll say things change and deny how much it actually will, but we all know that this isn't how things should change, that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you so much, Jamie. Sorry, I'm having a hard time reading names here. Last name Secheck, maybe?
We signed in third. Yeah, we're the builders, so.
Okay, no comment, okay.
No comment, yeah.
Um, this was Patty and Ken Davis, you've had your moment, um. This next one, no idea, if you don't get your name called, let us know and we'll add you to the end. Uh, Enos, all right.
If you could, I'd like you to put them out back up at the road.
And I'd like to stand up there and talk to you about this, if that's all right.
Put the map you wanted.
Um, let me get my bearings. Okay, J eighty. Hockus J, okay.
I'm sorry. One second. Enos, will you? Yeah, say your name and address.
I live on, uh, J Road and thirty-two nine thirty-two J Road in Hockus. I've been down there since nineteen ninety-four. I have an excavation business. I haul heavy equipment. Um, tribbles use this road. A lot of big trucks use this road. The expert, the traffic expert, I'd like to argue with a little bit. I'll just show you the situation. Here is venue. Here's my road. This is better than ninety degrees. I had a drunk upside down in my driveway two months ago. So they, they are drunks. I had another one over here about six years ago. Um, when you come out with the truck, you come here, traffic coming this way, I have to stop. They cut the corner and that's fine. I, I understand. I live here. People who don't live here are the ones that's gonna be in danger because they're gonna cut and come. So I've actually had almost head-on here. Uh, this corner, the trucks can't hardly get around. The trucks run off the road. The trailer does if you need anybody. So people don't, you know, they cut the corners. They all cut the corners, especially if they're not from around here. You come up here, you hit J eighty Road. Okay, I go down through Hockus. I won't go out that suicide trap. This road here is better than ninety degrees. When you swing out here with your truck, I have to go in the other lane. These people come up this road just at a steep, sharp corner. They're doing better than thirty-five. We almost get into head-ons. Same way when I come back, they'll cut the corner. And come down here to the railroad tracks, which you have in this address, coming down the hill, it throws the cars into your lane coming up the hill. If you don't stop, you're head-on. When I'm coming up, the road, the tracks are on a steep hill. It throws you into their lane. And they've worked on that crossing, I don't know how many times. They can't do anything with it. It is steep and it rolls the cars. And I think we just had another accident there upside down in the, in the traps. So, um, and then you get down here in Hockus, when they come off the highway, they seem to want to come back this way. Well, they come over right into you. This is better, this is a hundred and eighty degree turn. So that's your, that's what I deal with. I've lived here. I'm sixty-five years old. Been in business since nineteen eighty-five and that's the traffic situation.
All right. Thank you, Enos. Uh, someone, Campbell?
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Is that on time?
Yes. You are perfect on time.
I only had one thing to say, because I won't say.
Valerie Stucker.
You get in mind. You get in mind.
My name's Valerie Stucker. I live at three-three-one-eight-eight J Road. If you could put the picture of the barn back on.
Growing, yeah, perfect.
Um, my observation has been that the planning commission's made a mess by, um, the leadership and foresight on this. We've met once and we expressed our concerns and I don't feel like we were heard. Um, many neighbors raised objections. Now we've got, it's not really fair to the Davises that they've already begun and they have a big investment made to be bringing up objections now is not really fair. Um, yes, our land use code and allows for these kind of event venues, but that doesn't mean that the planning commission shouldn't have used discretion on looking at how the, there's plenty of land, but how it's situated with the houses. There's houses close to the venue, no matter where they were to put it. And it's not really fair to Melanie and Rush Christians. And even with that gate there, those lights are gonna shine right into their house, right into their bedroom window that already exists right here. That's not very fair. And then putting a ten-foot tall fence, that's gonna block their view. They have a beautiful view this way. So they get, and a ten-foot tall fence is gonna cause a blind corner now. So that's not gonna be an answer to that. It's been apparent that the Davis family does not have consideration of their neighbors. Have you seen the penis sculpture that they created and the middle finger sculpture that they created to shine up their neighbors in montos that they didn't get along with? They are not a wholesome family business like they would like to portray to you. That's, they've been running their equipment before six o'clock in the morning on Sundays and on Memorial Day. That's not very considerate of their neighbors. This is where the county has the authority to defend existing constituents rather than letting a new venture run roughshod over a community. And I believe the planning commission's already failed at this and now has made both sides upset. And now everybody's upset with the county as well. I'm wondering who will enforce the number of guests, the drunks and the noise. Who do we call? The Davises are not from here and I believe they're a little bit naive when it comes to wedding events. What? Ten seconds? Um, the drinking is not gonna be the same at a wedding as a family barbecue. Weddings are wild. Free bartender is what they're suggesting. That's not gonna work. The county's saturated already with wedding barns.
Thank you, Valerie. Melanie Hoshiko?
Melanie Hoshiko. I live at three-three-one-zero-one J Road. Uh, safety, safety, safety. That's what we've been saying over and over. In a recent memo pushed out to all of us from the planning department, Skip Hudson titles the memo, "Barn Traffic Facts." Sounds like fake news to me. Well, one statement is of particular concern. Turnkey consulting and planning lose all credibility when deciding to ignore our concerns that drunk drivers won't be able to negotiate ninety-degree terms and Steve shoulder drop-offs. Skip says there's no evidence was that provided to support this claim. Are you kidding me? Is this not the ultimate gaslighting? You can be sure if a drunk driver leaves the Davis venue and injures or kills someone, we will relentlessly be bringing back this statement and your position on it. Is this the position that you want to support? Isn't it the planning department's job to address the county road safety concerns? You've had it in front of you for seven months. We've been saying this is a problem. And instead of using your own data and research, in the last three days, you're relying on a memorandum from a consultant hired and paid for by the Davis family. It's his job to make it sound like there's not a problem. Why would you try to make us feel like we've come up with some absurd idea that drunk drivers can't handle a series of ninety-degree turns? Saying that there's no evidence. Well, let me show you some evidence. How alcohol impairs your ability to drive? The open bar effect. This is the Davis model. At which events with an open bar are people most likely to get drunk? The top event is weddings at sixty percent. Alcohol and driving. Alcohol reduces the skills you need to drive safely. Risk factors. Driving after drinking is deadly. We're like, duh. This is referencing our roads. Ninety-degree curves represent a sharp change in direction, requiring significant speed reduction and precise steering. S-curves involve multiple directional changes with a relatively short distance, demanding greater driver attentiveness and control. Well, less than two weeks ago, a driver went off across from the venue. This is the second time this has happened in less than a year. Davis pulls him out, doesn't report it. The state patrol let us know that that same driver called the tow truck company and said, "I need to hire you, but only if you don't report me." Thirty minutes later, that driver was arrested after a road sobriety test. Lastly, it's going to affect our property values. I had an email from my realtor saying that it's going to decrease our property values.
Thank you, Melanie.
You're welcome.
Henry Hoshiko.
Henry Hoshiko. I live at three-three-two-zero-seven J eighty Road. I'd like to dispute the, uh, the referenced travel, um, report. This report assumes that only twelve, hundred and twenty people maximum would be attending the events being held at the venue. This assumes a maximum forty-eight cars would be used to bring them. Therefore, the parking lot needs to have only forty-eight spaces. Is that gonna be done? Is that gonna be recorded? The report also claims that the project does not create dangerous conditions for existing road users because it is a long trip generating land, land use. The trips generated by this venue spike into a high concentration traffic that becomes dangerous to existing road users. The report also claims that the county roads are designed for the amount of venue trips and other traffic in Oak and would only increase the volume to capacity by point oh nine. This assumes that the traffic is uniformly distributed over one hour. However, the traffic coming out of the venue in a, is in a surge. Let's assume that they've come out in, out in ten minutes. That would create a volume of forty-eight cars in ten minutes or four point eight cars per minute. The density of the rural road is twelve point two cars per minute. The venue would create a volume to capacity of point three-nine. This is considerably more than the point oh five that can, that was considered semi-congested for and is considered semi-congested. This report claims that there is no abnormal high number of drunk driver accidents as a result of venue. It contends that the cars will designate drivers. There is no guarantee of, of that because the venue has no control over because of the attendees will bring their own liquor. Also, there is no way to force people to designate drivers. Drug drivers having accidents were dramatically demonstrated on June fourteenth when apparently when the drunk driver missed the turn on the north side of the event, event property. This report says that the increased traffic to the venue will only be eighty-five vehicles per hour, per week. However, the traffic will create noise and the risk of accidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Diane Hoshiko? No, okay. Tim Austin? All right. Ross Christiansen?
I, I think I'd just like to point out, uh, the packet that Melanie gave you about risk in driving.
Ross, can you, sorry, can you state your address?
Yeah, Ross Christiansen, thirty-three-one-oh-one J Road, six hundred feet from the boundary of this ninety-three car parking lot made of gravel. Imagine the headlights. People need to get a sense of scale. Whenever I talk to this about somebody, it's like, okay, this is a North Fork Miners football game. Average attendance letting out at ten o'clock at night on the weekend. I live, my life working really hard Monday through Friday all over the state of Colorado, come back and enjoy my Friday, Saturday evening. And at ten o'clock at night, you're gonna have a mass exodus of crowd with headlights pointing. This is the first time we've heard of a ten-foot fence. We're always given a moving target. If we're gonna do conditions today, they gotta be strict written conditions that they have to comply to. No guarantees of verbal. It moves every day. Every time we do a court request, the target's been moved. You know how hard it is to argue against that? Very difficult. The, the other issues are, yes, I mean, in addition to the rest of the road, when you go down Cemetery Road across the, there's a cemetery there. You know, people need to go out there and when they have funerals there, that causes traffic congestion in our funeral. They're small. They're like fifteen cars usually. Yeah, and then, yeah, sometimes they're big. If, if mine would be like one car, nobody's gonna go there. But then when you go over the railroad track and down there, you got the Hockus cattle operation. If there's a funeral and Hockus is or low, you know, cattle, loaded cattle in there, that creates an enormous traffic jam that backs up right below the railroad tracks. I'm not opposed. That's gonna be a beautiful barn. I'm not opposed to wedding venues. I have friends that have wedding venues, like new friends. We're not like anti-growth or development. This is just a really horrible, horrible location. Very, I mean, just like do the overlay before you get this poor couple down that road of investment. I mean, you did warn them not to start construction. That's their risk. So I don't wanna hear that risk story, the cry story from them. You've told them, "Do not start construction until you have the permit." Well, we've got lots of construction, boulder removal. And, and yeah, it makes it hard to be kind and reciprocal at five-thirty AM on a Sunday and Monday, Memorial Day, when they're scraping boulders, moving lots. Lori calls to try to be courteous. And instead, he focuses his attention with the bulldozer on the neighbor that complained on him the next morning at five-thirty. The sheriff didn't ever, you refused to enforce. We have it on email. When I talked to you before, when this started, you told me that, you know, I could rely on you for, because my biggest worry was no recourse. Like, how do we control the environment if they won't? If they won't control the environment, which they still kind of waffle on, have you noticed that? It's still kind of like, well, maybe a bartender, maybe a TIP certified bartender, maybe not. You know, it needs to be rigid because I don't, I mean, we need consistent enforcement that we can rely upon. Otherwise, we have no control. I think my wife's, uh, Melanie's data that she showed in terms of, those are raw data statistics. Policy and public policy administration should be data-driven, not opinion-driven. The statistics on wedding overconsumption, the consistence is, yes, it's very, the, sorry. Public policy data-driven, not opinion-driven. Thank you. Sorry, I pretend always.
Another one I cannot read.
Can I help you, Veronica?
I can read yours. You are not yet. Grant Hartman. Again, if I miss you in the lineup, we will have a chance at the end.
Hi. I'm Grant Hartman. I live at three-three-one-three-zero-J eighty, eighty Road. And, um, thank you for listening to me. I am speaking. So I'm actually just gonna read some things. This is from the land use code. Um, it is my understanding, sorry. Almost forgot these. My understanding that, um, that you all are here to see if this complies with the code as it's, was it referred to. Um, so I'm just gonna go word for word. I did just kind of highlight things. I know we're gonna go on time, but, uh, um, I'm just gonna read from this again. Uh, Delta County has a strong commitment to private property rights. However, physical impact of the use of private property on surrounding properties is a matter of county concern and therefore a proper subject of county regulation. The right to develop and improve private property does not include the right to adversely impact neighboring properties. Even if that means the property owner cannot utilize property for its perceived highest and best use. Land use that generates noise, dust, traffic, or other potential off-site impacts are directed by this code to certain zoning districts. Um, obviously, we know this is zone D B twenty. This is a conditional permit. But there's others, um, zones. Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, anyway, uh, this code is designed to increase understanding among landowners, residents, business owners, and decision-makers as to the separation between private property rights and public interests. And before I ask you, does this really fall into the public interest? What do I have to say? Thank you.
Robin Wadham's. No, no comments. And then Harry Waddams?
Harry Waddams, three-three-zero-seven-zero-J.
Gary Waddams, three three zero seven zero J eighty. If I get out to my mailbox, I can probably almost get Highway ninety two with a rock. Not quite. I'm not as young as him. So I I, as I'm being involved in this over the last few months, you know, it may I think you guys made it very clear that if you're gonna hear the same redundant thing over and over again, it's probably not gonna help. But I'm gonna put a little twist on the alcohol. Because I I'm not gonna sit here, because I agree with everything's been said as far as the traffic. Enos Ruble did a wonderful job. He uh, I think he could have described Cemetery Hill Road, which Todd, I know you know very well, because I know a lot of your guys, et cetera, et cetera, see him go down that road very cautiously when they get to the railroad tracks. But here's my question. I'm gonna add to the alcohol concern. So my understanding is that the parking lot is at ninety seven spaces. It ought to be at forty eight, like like Mr. Hiroshima said. I hope I pronounced that right.
You're good.
So so now, he can go.
So let's talk about the parking lot shrinking down to forty eight. What was it, an average of two point five people in a car? So let's be realistic. If they were gonna go down the street to thirty one hundred road and get into the Best Western and go to bed. Because Kate, I think you made a joke about different kind of weddings. Well, me too. I'm sixty six years old, been to a lot of weddings. Where are these guests going to stay? Are they gonna go down Cemetery Hill Road? And maybe they've already made reservations at the Hotchkiss Inn, which has twenty four rooms. And you've got to accommodate over twenty four rooms for people or guests. So now they're gonna force them down to the Redwood Inn or, can't remember the exact name of it, Topeonia, which is another ten miles of dark deer ridden highway. I just want to instill that I think the planning committee, no offense, didn't do a lot of good homework on where are these people that I assure you, in some of these weddings, were drinking and probably drinking excessively and don't have a reliable designated driver just because he was on the other side of the bar serving them as he helped himself behind the bar. We don't, you know.
Or they get it out of their car. They bring it in their car.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. All right, Veronica, it's your turn.
Thank you.
Finder.
Finder, we are gonna set a timer. I know you probably have some things to say. We'll try to stick there, stick to our limit.
I've taken this very seriously.
All right, let's start with your name and address for the record.
Veronica Teal, one zero zero two four thirty three hundred road. I would like to ask you to look at these pictures, not just pass them to the end. This was my welcome to Hotchkiss two years ago. This was a young kid coming from
Delta.
Had too much to drink and made his way into my into my pasture. Now, since then, I now foster horses. These are not horses that are mining. They are not owned by me. They've come from bad situations. They're not always friendly. We know people from Denver aren't the smartest people. They release wolves to us, for God's sake. They go to fences, they pet animals, they feed them whatever. Oh, there's, well, you know, there's weeds out here. Let's just give them to the animals. That makes our animals sick. I cannot have that. I would like to address the fast tracking. CDOT has already approved. The water has already been approved. BLCC has already approved. You guys all but approved until we got enough people to voice complaints. Yes, this has been going on for a year, but to us, we are now finally getting heard. This is not fast track for us. There are forty nine residents just on J road, J eighty road and ninety two hundred road that are affected by the drive to the Davis event venue. That's not counting the people who take thirty three or take it next to the cemetery. That is a lot of people in the rural area. We need help. We cannot call Hotchkiss P D. We are outside of Hotchkiss P D. We have to call the Sheriff's Department and wait for them to come. The CDOT report stated accidents. That accident is not on the C D uh the CDOT report. I contacted the Douglas County Sheriff's Department, asked them to please give me a report of accidents. I contacted the State Patrol. My response from the uh the Sheriff's Department, we don't give those out. The only people that give out accident reports is the State Patrol. CDOT does not have access to the accidents. How that made it in that traffic report is beyond me because that is a falsehood.
One second.
Uh let's see, fast track, missing documents. We were invited to our very first meeting. Documents were given to BLCC. Somehow, they never made it to the planning, although we were invited to the meeting by the planning board and our instructions were sent to to send our documents to Brittany. Were those documents? Because we don't know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Veronica. I do want to address uh two things that you mentioned. You said that the BLCC has already approved. That is not true. The BLCC has not heard this hearing. They did approve a replat. They have not approved this hearing. I believe that community members attended a BLCC meeting to speak at a constituent time. Um those comments did make it into our application packet. That in that form, the BLCC could not speak to the this matter because they were not formally hearing it and they did not want to prejudice themselves against the actual hearing. So that was done partially to protect you as well, so that they didn't make a predetermination on the case before hearing the case. Um those documents have not disappeared. We have received comment. Um and they, from the minutes from that meeting, as well as all email and written comment have come to us as part of our agenda packet. So we have heard your uh we have seen your comments in writing. Um and just to clarify the the role of the BLCC in this this thing, they will not hear the meeting next, and that's why they they did not comment uh they comment back or receive public testimony about the hearing at that point. Um there were two names on this list that I could not uh read. If there's anyone else in the room that would like to make public comment, if you could raise your hand or come forward.
I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I'd like to say something.
Okay, sure.
Do I need to come up there?
Yes, please.
My name is Sandy Dix. Um I take care of the cemetery at three three five eight five J eighty road. And um we have few funerals uh oftentimes during the week, a lot of times, mostly on the weekends. And I don't know if the volume uh at the wedding venue would necessarily impact that. But I know that mourners like quiet and I know that they they need that respect. And so I would be concerned about that kind of thing, the noise level possibly affecting a funeral and ongoing funeral. And um also the traffic is a concern for me as well because they come down that hill really fast, right in front of the cemetery. And if we have a funeral being led out, it's very hard to get onto that road if there's a lot of traffic, so that's my main concern. Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else that's here in person between before we turn to the Zoom? All right, uh let's see, how's the best way to do this? If if anyone online would like to make public comment, if you can raise your hand or unmute yourself. Uh and I'll I'll call names out as I see them. Uh after I call your name on Zoom, if you unmute yourself and start talking, I'll assume you want to make comment. If you do not unmute or say anything, I'll assume that you are bypassing. Uh Tina Walker. All right, Lori. Delta County, Delta County, Sarah. Veronica. Uh I can't quite read that.
Trill.
Trill.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Hi, if you can state your name and your address for the group.
Yeah, I'm Phil Luck. I'm over here, uh one five eight three five Blackford Road, and I'm reporting for a local news source. Um I'm just wondering, at a proposed impact level of fifty events per year, how is that not considered the commercial use of the property? Um it's been kind of figured like you've got essentially fifty events. That that's more events than Big B's puts on. For instance. Um so I really questioned whether this is an agritourism or this is just a way for somebody to have, I mean, it doesn't seem like this is a farmer looking for a way to supplement their income to somebody who has a designated business that is wholly being used to generate income through events. And you obviously value safety concerns, you know, unlicensed bartenders and all sorts of things that can arise from that. So I really just wonder how this really is obviously commercial use of the property was approved and why it's being allowed to continue uh as a non-commercial use, if it clearly is.
All right, thank you, Trill. Um I guess I I might just speak to that quickly. Um there's several land uses identified in the land use code. Uh commercial, there's there are certain types of land uses that are considered uh commercial by the definitions of the code. Other activities that happen within the county, other land uses can be commercial in the sense that they're revenue generating. Um they're run by a business as opposed to, you know, a small home business or as opposed to uh a non-for-profit or a a church or something. Um the the process by which the applicant comes to us um is sort of the same. We're at the most elevated version of the application process there is, which is a notification and a public hearing. So kind of semantically, it doesn't really matter um in terms of how we're processing the application.
Copy that.
All right, Lori Mitchell. All right, so
I'd like to speak. Can I speak?
Sure. Can you come up and state your name and address?
Ryan Stucker, three three one eight eight G road, Hotchkiss. Um this is the first I heard of the barn door situation and the way it's aimed, and it's directed basically towards our house. Uh wind blows from the west and uh it's gonna carry right to my house. There's a reason I chose this place to live. It's out in the country. It's quiet and close to town, so that's handy. And um like, I can tell you right now, the fairgrounds, I know it's an open venue and they're probably louder decibel. I can hear it plain as day up at my house, okay? And that's a long ways away. So um the barn door situation, one of you guys up here brought that up, that you know, it will possibly amplify the the sounds. And um a new concern for me is that those barn doors are not open. And of course, they're going to be open because it's facing the view and everybody's gonna want the view. So right there is gonna be a problem for me personally. The other thing is I live on the corner there on J road. And, you know, we don't have anything up there really right now, and I have drunk drivers that go off every year, sometimes multiple times, that go unreported because I have to go pick up all the pieces of their vehicle because J road has been elevated there about four foot higher than what it used to be. So it's above ground level. So if you go off, you're going off hard. And people go off in the front, right by my driveway every year, every year. And it's just a lot of turns, a lot of tight turns. I just don't see this as a great place for a wedding venue, especially if there is drinking. And, you know, it's all speculation on the drinking and driving. We don't know. Maybe there's not going to be a problem, but it could be, so. Um the other concern is that elevation of four foot on the roads, that is shining headlights right into my house. It's already a problem with the traffic we have now. And with the wedding venue, this can be way worse, so.
Thank you.
And I do believe our property values will go down because of it.
Yeah, in our policy line.
And that for sure.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make public comment on this? Okay, we're gonna close public comment and uh begin discussion between the commissioner member commissioners. Uh I will, you know, allow questions of staff and whatnot. If there are some clarifying questions, um just a reminder to commissioners, we can have a discussion. And then at any point, if someone wants to make a motion to approve, to approve with uh additional conditions or to deny, uh we can make that motion. Please look at your piece of paper about how to make the motion. We're gonna try to keep it neat and tidy for our record keepers. Um maybe we'll just go down the line again. David.
Oh, um my thoughts on this. Oh, I've been on the planning commission, I don't know, three, three years, four years. Um we, e- every time there's an application comes in, we have the neighbors, because they're the ones that are most affected by a change of use. And I don't care whether it's a mobile asphalt, mobile concrete, batch plant, a five-house subdivision, five-lot subdivision, a solar farm, an event venue. We've had, we've considered event venues before. And clearly, the neighbors are the ones that are most clearly affected by that. But the the land use code doesn't just go by how many neighbors complain. So it's always a tough call here. We've considered an an event venue just like this within the last few years. We had the same complaints from the neighbors. Traffic, lights, noise, drunk drivers. And the commissioners approved it. So there has to be some consistency there in the way things are applied. I think the staff is probably correct here that the land use code does allow this kind of use. And I think the applicants have probably met the 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 standard there. Now, we do have, and we've talked about some conditions here. Uh for me, if we do go ahead and approve this, I think I think bringing this down to fifty events is reasonable. I'd be mighty surprised if they can get fifty events in a year. And certainly, they're not gonna get fifty weddings in a year. If that were to happen, they'd be the most successful wedding venue in western Colorado.
Can we leave this question?
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Um with the business plan, I mean, beer and wine only should be specified. Privacy fence seems to be the best solution there. They gotta prohibit fireworks. I think the venue is only open until nine PM. That that seems like a reasonable hour. Uh I, you know, I understand the traffic and the roads out there. But I am I tend to follow the 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 requirements of the code and the traffic study here. And he does address, and this is the way things are calculated, when you require a traffic study, you do these calculations based upon numbers and statistics. And I think the increase in traffic will be, it'll be, certainly it'll be heavy at the time, right before an event and right after an event. But how often is that gonna occur? And the events are more than just weddings, but we're all focusing on weddings and drunk drivers. I just don't know that it's gonna be that. I just don't know that it's gonna be that, that dramatic.
Anything you'd like to add to the conversation or make a motion, Commissioner?
I think we're gonna listen to everybody else talk.
All right. Yep. Commissioner Clark?
So just to help my mind wrap, uh, come up with a good solution here. Our land use code does allow for this to occur. Uh, and I don't think we as a planning commission can change the applicant's application. We can specify certain changes that we would recommend. But I wanna ask, who has the priority of use on county roads? The farmer, the heavy equipment operator, the property-owned vehicle? Who has priority? What are the hours of right to farm? And is moving equipment, clearing land included in the right to farm? And who is responsible for operating a vehicle? And one that came up, what is the artistic interpretation of the Davis's sculptures? I would like to know that one particularly from the Davis's, what they intended that sculpture to be. And we are about building businesses and we are about building farms. So if you could answer me, Davis's please, what was your artistic interpretation of the sculptures that you built that was brought up here tonight that I only saw a thumbnail sketch of?
Would you like me to come up?
You can.
You can answer.
Okay. Uh, in a nutshell, um, we bought property in Mount Bruce, a subdivision with, uh, eight lot owners. Um, we had, uh, a farmer using, uh, his farm equipment at our property. He left it there, his farm equipment over the winter. There are covenants for the property. Um, it didn't cover farm equipment. Uh, that was allowed. Uh, we had a neighbor move in, uh, across the street from our lot. They, uh, immediately, within about three weeks, uh, sent me and four of the other, uh, lot owners covenant demand letters, uh, take care of this or we're going to court. And, uh, what ours was, was, uh, the farm equipment. We said farm equipment is allowed. And their response was, no, you gotta read between the lines. It's implied that you can't have it there. Um, I was retired just recently. I'm a chainsaw carver for thirty-five years. Uh, I did a sculpture. And, uh, at first I put up, uh, hugging bears. They objected to that. They, uh, didn't like it a bit. I don't think they would have liked anything I would have put up. I also put up, uh, mushrooms. These are, these sculptures are five feet tall. So, uh, finally, I just got frustrated. Um, I'm not a violent person, but I feel this was like passive aggressive. I carved, uh, when they threatened to take my other neighbor to court over his roof pitch, I asked all the lot owners, with the exception of the one that I considered the problem, if it was okay if I did this. And they all said yes. I had their blessing.
Oh, boy.
I carved a, uh, I can't remember now if I carved the monk first or the big hand first. But the monk, uh, is a hooded monk holding a cross. And if you look at him from the front, it's a monk. If you look at him from the back, it resembles something else. And I always called it the monk. And the neighbors objected to it. Then they called law enforcement, uh, the sheriff. Sheriff came out and, uh, I told him the situation about, uh, them abandoning, leaving all this stuff or we're going to court. And I said, I've got the right to do this. It's the First Amendment, right of speech. I just wanted to make a point. And, uh, it was okay. Uh, the sheriffs did come out periodically to get their pictures next to it. The, uh, state patrol also came out periodically. They wanted their pictures taken next to it. It was on the easement of the, uh, ditch. They called the ditch company. They had no problem with it. I, uh, ended up taking that one down. I may be getting one before the other. I can't remember now, but when they actually.
So just get to the point, please.
Okay.
What was your artistic interpretation? The peaceful monk to all the property owners?
It was a hand doing this.
I'm not asking you.
Okay.
What was it?
I would like to actually kind of limit this conversation. It's a separate piece of property and doesn't really speak to any of our purview. Unfortunately, we cannot make our decision based on character.
According to the land code, it has to do with our community.
Okay, I withdraw my answer. Thanks, Harry. I didn't get to. But, uh, I think I have enough information to make an informed decision here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Commissioner Queen, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, yes, I do. Um, first of all, I, I appreciate all of the objective points of view that were brought tonight. Uh, unfortunately, a lot of our meetings do not contain objectivity, and I do appreciate that. Um, we are in a difficult situation, I feel. Um, we can have a conversation about whether our land use codes efficiently cover situations like this. But that's probably not a conversation we're gonna have tonight. Our responsibility of commissioners of the, um, planning department, or of the land use, is to decide whether this application fits within the conditions set forth by our commissioners in the current land use codes. Okay, that's, that's, that's what we have been instructed to do. Um, as explained before, this is a recommendation to the B O C C. If we stray from that, it won't matter. They will reverse anything we decide. We were really trying to stay within our lane of what the land use code says. That's all we can do. Um, there are a couple of things I do want to point out. One, I, um, grew up in Hotchkiss all my life, very familiar with these roads. Um, I too have some questions about the, the traffic study that was done. I've driven roads a lot. I've driven trailers on these roads a lot. Um, of course, I've driven in a lot of areas in this county where, um, the ability of the other drivers on the road is always a concern. I don't know that limiting the traffic because of bad drivers is, is ever gonna be an answer to any, okay? Um, the alcohol. I feel like we have greatly lost, um, our expectation of our communities to exercise personal responsibility. Um, whether this event venue is here or not, the backroads of Hotchkiss, Colorado, of Delta, Colorado, of Cedar Ridge, of Crawford, of Peonia are gonna be filled with drunk drivers constantly. There ain't nothing that this venue is gonna do to change that. Okay, now, I do appreciate Davis's, your business plan and what the, the detail that you have put into it. Because again, not many of our applicants come forth with as detailed of a business plan. Having a contractual obligation with your, um, renters, with the people leasing your venue, for them to provide safe driving for those who consume alcohol, I feel like is, is a, a good request to have. I don't know that you have, or anybody else for that matter, would have any other control over the actions of somebody else greater than that. You can contractually have them sign. I just, I just don't know what else you can do to, to prevent it. Um, although I understand as people that live close to this venue, it's a concern. I get it. Um, can we put up the conditions as they, as they are proposed right now? You speak. Um, the barn doors staying closed, I, I think is a, is a good condition to place on there. Um, for one, it's gonna help them meet the requirements of the noise with, uh, the land use code. And also, um, the disturbances from lights and things like that. I think that is something that, that will help. I feel like that should be a condition of including this. Um, obviously, as the fire chief explained, those doors cannot be locked, but I do think that it should be an expectation that they stay closed during the venue. Um, to Kate's point, having some type of cooling in the venue so that it's okay for those doors to stay closed, I think is also a good idea. Um, oh, I'm also very, very business friendly. I, um, I appreciate people being entrepreneurial and wanting to, um, to, to start businesses and to provide some type of economic value to our, uh, communities. I appreciate that. Um, I feel, um, that asking them to limit the venues to nine P M. will greatly reduce the number of potential people to rent, uh, their facility. It is still daylight at nine o'clock right now. I just, I think that's, um, that's unfair to request of that. And so I, I would object to that change. I feel like those are, that pretty well covers my, my thoughts.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tom. Lane, do you have anything to add?
Commissioner Queen just thoroughly explained our duties on, on this side of the table. Um, I read every one of your objections to people out there in the crowd. I, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your concerns.
Yeah.
And the Davis's put forth a, a lot of effort and, and, uh, they're, they're complying with everything that's requested of them. They cannot be responsible for people that wanted, wanted to get drunk and drive. All right, that's, that's not different than, than any other gathering. If somebody overindulges, that's their responsibility. What I was going to recommend to, um, to Sean here is any contacting Sheriff Taylor? And if, if the Davis's would, would.
Um, we did reach out to the sheriff and he did not respond.
Well, what I was, this suggests as a condition maybe is, I, I know he's always shorthanded too, but if, if he would, every time there's, there's an event out there, if they would park a marked unit in one of the neighbors' driveways at closing time, just to give people leaving there an idea that they're being watched, might, might slow the traffic down and make people drive more responsibly until at least they get out on Highway ninety-two. And then it's Katie bar door. But, uh, anyway, I appreciate everybody's, uh, comments tonight. And I read all a hundred and twenty pages in the last two days of this, so I'm pretty familiar with everybody's objections. And, and a lot of them are valid. But here again, the, the Davis's have followed everything correctly, so we have to, uh, make our decision accordingly. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Lance, do you have anything to add?
Um, you, I, uh, I echo the comments of the rest of Commissioner to this book before me. Uh, however, I take a different view. Uh, I think the land use code, um, section two, A one B says it's protect the character of existing rural communities, urban communities, and neighborhoods. And I don't feel that this business, as much work as the Davis put into it, fits in that neighborhood. Uh, I think it's a, I, I think they put a lot of work into a business plan. I like the idea. Just don't think it fits in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
And the land use code under the same section, B, one C, talks about, um, putting businesses in areas where those impacts are lessened and fit the area. And I think that this fits more in a uh, the, what was it, the R C D? Realized that part. Real, real area somewhere, not in the neighborhood, so.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Gray, do you have anything to add?
Do, um, want to commend our staff preparing public, getting the, for this meeting. Um, commend, uh, you know, the community, you know, this application has indirectly made you a stronger neighborhood or community, um, ironically. And so, you know, good job on you guys for organizing and synthesizing like, like Todd said, um, we don't get a lot of, we can get sometimes valuable, objective information. You guys came with a lot of that. So I appreciate that. Um, understand the need for consistency. Some of the conditions that I'll put forward, um, from potentially some other ones, you know, other venues we've approved. And some of them were proffered on, um, the applicants themselves. Um, there's also some topics that we as a commission that I think we should flag to discuss, um, after this, but, you know, defining agritourism, looking at event venue restrictions, uh, on their own. And then how we analyze private data versus county data, particularly on um, drug studies. Um, this will also help us develop, you know, neighborhood meeting standards. Um, as the synthesizer of the board, I have like a list of ten conditions. I may wait for that till the end, but I don't know if we want to like straw pull those. You know, I'll leave that to you as the chair. I'm just gonna run through those and we can either vote on those as a commission or not. Um, and some of these have question marks. Uh, do we consider requiring venue to staff a bartender with only a license? This comes from a previous, other menu that we approved that, that did staff this, and it sounds like that might answer some of my questions. Um, do we condition a privacy fence, uh, on the west nor side of the parking lot? Although with the caveat that that creates a blind spot, so we'd have to, you know, consider engineering with that. Uh, preventing fireworks. Uh, do we require management plan, uh, I E. is someone on staff, um, there to kind of enforce drug policy, drinking policy timelines? Um, the flexibility on the timeline, you know, the applicant said that that could move for, uh, forward on the front end. We should probably clearly define that as a condition so that there's not wiggle room to say, well, the applicants wanted to be up till eleven-thirty. Um, the contractual requirements for responsible drivers, we probably should put that in the written, written condition along with the drug policy. Uh, timeline of music, um, considering the, the funeral comment, we should probably put a stipulation because it is near a funeral that, you know, not blasting music during the day when a funeral would likely, uh, be happening. Do we condition a smaller parking lot to hopefully minimize the impact because of the smaller business? Um, it sounds like a condition for the barn door closed during music, uh, makes sense. A condition for beer and wine specifically makes sense. And then we have a, a discussion on, on hours of operation. So that was my bullet list. Those are all written down. I'll leave that up to the chair on how we go through that. So those are my.
Great. Thanks for synthesizing, Jake. Um, I think I echo what a lot of the mission members have said. Uh, I think we all know, you know, we all thoroughly understand the concerns of the community and we're, we're balancing those against um, some other mandates we have and, and with the letter of the law says. I think Lance brings up a good point that some of that is, is up for interpretation in terms of, you know, the character of the neighborhood and whatnot. Um, I feel like the best thing that we can do is try to address some neighborhood concerns and mitigate them. Um, if we proceed. Uh, so I think maybe we should go through each of those points that Jake mentioned. And quickly, um, yeah, kind of straw pull and refine how we would want to condition those items. Um, one, and maybe one kind of category would be the, the liquor. Um, seems like, you know, the applicants have said that only beer and wine will be served. Uh, it seems like there's probably consensus for uh, making that a, a written condition. Um, the other application you mentioned, we, we did condition a liquor license and, uh, licensed bartender uh, to be providing alcohol. Um, do we, and do we know if that was approved by B O C C? Did that go all the way through? On the pro.
Pro. I, I don't know. I can find out while you're talking.
Um, so, yeah, there's the, I guess. So, yeah, there's the, I guess, maybe just kind of, you know, struggle beer and wine limitations. Does everyone feel good about that?
Yes.
Uh, requiring some sort of uh liquor license or certification, certified bartenders?
I'm a yes.
Okay, a question I have just.
Yeah.
So those things seem to be outside of our purview with the exception of he included the beer and wine only in his business plan.
Mm-hmm.
Where the business plan is part of our purview, requesting that there be no changes to the, or, or mandating that there be no changes from the business plan as presented. But that would rule out the liquor license and so I just don't.
Yeah, I'm not sure legally where we are in terms of requiring other types of regulatory agencies be involved, but.
I think contractually they could have the on the customer, they could require them to provide, they, first they could limit them to beer and wine only. They could require them to provide alternative transportation. And I think I've seen that done in the past.
Hmm.
But to require, I mean, the, the applicant obtain a liquor license and provide the bar to that adds a whole nother level of involvement and responsibility, I think, because then they're running a liquor establishment. It's a whole other licensing thing that takes a long time. And I don't think it's really gonna change things much. I, I think you could probably put some contractual language in there and require the people to show up with their alternative transportation plan ahead of time. Either it's they got it, somebody sitting there with a van, or they got somebody they can call, something like that.
We have a copy of the business plan as it currently sits.
In the packet.
Uh.
I did not read all.
That wasn't, that wasn't, those details weren't in there. They kind of added some of this stuff tonight.
Well, the, the business plan is that we, that we have addresses, um, the fact that the uh they would, they are not providing liquor, that the um the, the renters would provide their own alcohol. But I don't believe it limits it to beer and wine. And I don't believe.
It says all liquor here.
Yeah. So I think we would have to condition that uh specifically. Um.
But no liquor license. Um, my next one would be the privacy fence uh with the caveat that if engineering seems that as we miss the conditions, kind of null voids, I guess we leave out there. Do we want to condition that there's some kind of privacy screening?
I think it's a good idea because that mitigate headlights.
Same with the biz, the lights on the barn.
Yes.
Still same kind of criteria there. But I think the right of way for the road is sufficient, is it not, to put a fence right on that right of way?
To enable for still a good view.
No.
You gotta do that, you're gonna cause wrecks on that corner.
It's really.
Have you ever driven that road? I, I wish you could ride with me in the truck.
We can flag that for engineering, but I don't know if our condition can say something, you know? A private, a privacy fence approved by county engineering.
Yeah.
I think first.
Or whatever it's worth.
Yeah, on the north and the west side.
Yeah. Last night.
I think that's ten.
Yeah.
I'm a weak twenty.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, I guess I don't know how, how to weigh community concern about.
Could change the parking lot size and then push the privacy fence down. That would work.
Or parking lot access, a different entrance. Who, I don't know if we can make that big of changes to this application at this point. Uh, I think we're kind of restricted to their, their general site plan. Um.
If they have a fence right on the edge of the parking lot, that may suffice for the likelihood of changing.
What can you solve?
And maybe that'll be the comment we make that the the privacy fence to mitigate light pollution on neighboring properties be erected on the site within right of with, with consideration given to right of ways and a sight lines on the curb.
Todd, you look like you're looking at a map and thinking about whether that would work.
I, I've driven that sort of a lot and you start looking for people coming the other way about back here.
Yeah.
Um, and it's gonna be tough. So, the question I have is the site plan is required. If, you know, I, I feel like our responsibility as a planning commission is to say yes, but so we want to say yes, but we have to provide the conditions for that yes to be approved. How many parking spots are currently in your site plan right now?
I believe it's ninety-three.
Okay.
And let me add a, the right of way of the road is thirty-five feet. We can't do anything from the edge of the road, thirty-five feet in. So that does add to be able to see around the corner.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, there's, there's footage.
Would you be willing to consider reducing the size of your parking lot?
Well, there's one thing I'd like to point out though, that uh they are basing the amount of vehicles on two point five people per car. Uh, some people are gonna come by themselves. What if we have the majority of the guests show up in their own vehicle? Or a horse. The size of that space, I would have had it smaller if that space was smaller. That was the perfect place for us to put a parking lot for the venue because of where it was. And it left the major chunk of property still available for farming. The majority of people are gonna be heading toward the exit, which cuts down on the headlights going toward uh the uh west. Uh, the majority of headlights will be heading out of the parking lot uh east.
So do we want to condition privacy fencing and, you know?
You just condition whatever like, what, whatever be effective over two scene the light impacts with.
Yeah, I, I doubt.
Without severely impeding the, the site.
This is gonna.
I, I could say light mitigation.
Yeah, I guess you might resonate that you have lights in your house or we're going to create a safety risk.
Yeah.
It's.
So we'll just take one for the team, my husband, you know?
We're trying, we are, we're doing our best to figure out what, what the best solution is here.
Can I say one thing? I wanna say something.
I'm not going to open it up to public.
I just wanna say something for the fifty-some people that couldn't be here. You keep saying how the Davis's have put all this work in. What about all the years that we pay taxes? You've improved our land.
Ma'am, we are trying to best consider this application within our purview and we have listened and read your comments. We will continue with our conversation uh amongst commissioner members, but I will not open it up further comment. Do we have the next?
From the fireworks.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
About the fire pit.
Yeah, the words.
I just have the fire pit on the diesel. Under barn.
Nice.
Uh, it sounds like we don't want to require management, not in this plan. Um. Uh, do we want to condition the lining out that flexibility on the timeline, or should we just give them up? Give them hours, hours.
I feel like uh, community members have mentioned early morning concerns as well. Maybe we put a, a I mean, I think that we already have a condition on nine, nine A M to ten P M. And if people wanna come before nine A M to set up, I don't I don't think we could do one of those.
Space.
Yeah.
I think it's the end time is concerned.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock if you're.
I, I, again, I, I put nine o'clock and I think that's what's happened in the past. And I think that reduces the likelihood that people are getting, eating too much because they won't be there that long. If they clear out at nine o'clock, the noise, I mean, if you go till ten and then you, people clear the parking lot out, these neighbors are gonna be, they're gonna have stuff going on until eleven.
How, how many weddings have you been to that have been?
Well, that's, that's the, that's the choice to put this event in this kind of neighborhood. I mean, that's, so that's, that's my feeling with that. And I think it's consistent with prior.
Is there any other support for nine P M versus seven P M?
That would be impossible.
Next uh issue?
Fire responsible drivers.
What page does the business plan start with?
Uh, twenty-three of the actual thing on the PDF. It's like, eh, yeah, twenty.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two on the PDF.
Yeah.
So.
Along those lines, we talked about alternative transportation plan. But again, that gets into management. Unless we just ask them to require their.
My, my concern that it be who's gonna enforce that?
Yeah.
There's, I mean, it's gotta be specific and I don't see that there's a way to enforce.
I think that goes back to that civil responsibility for private contracts.
Uh-uh.
Um, because those private, private contracts are the civil side of things. Um, obviously I can't be there for every event.
Um, but, but those will change when it changes hands.
Right.
Contracts go with the winds.
Right.
Then I'm.
Do, is your business plan currently updated from what we have? Cause I, I don't see the mention of the, the contract with them to provide safe driving for the beer and wine only.
Uh, can I maybe amend beer and wine to an alcohol level? Like uh the free drinks at uh three point two. Uh, I don't, I'm not familiar too much with alcohol. I don't drink, but uh I definitely am not advocating for drinking and driving, not at all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
True.
I guess my question is, you know, kind of within our purview, can we we're kind of talking about an adjustment to their business plan, which has already been submitted with this application. Would they submit a new business plan or these kind of outside of their business plan where we're conditioning? No event shouldn't take, you know?
Yeah, is the business cl- plan either accepted or denied? Or can we request modifications?
I think we're adding things on top of the business plan, just like we're adding outdoor lighting and.
Yeah, right. And I'm just wondering, is that what they're on curvy? Or is it just like a yes for you?
You could also ask if something's not in there. Is a copy of the lease request to a lease indicate things instead of focusing on the business plan?
Right. I think uh the, my, what I'm trying to determine is kind of like, okay, they've, they've submitted the business plan as part of this application. They're kind of being held to this business plan. I don't think we're asking them to adjust their business plan. Business plan isn't a legal document. Um, other than that it's been submitted as part of this application. But we don't need to be redundant in what we're conditioning and it's already in the business plan.
Correct.
Uh, but the restriction to beer and wine is not in the business plan. The, um, in the contracts that would uh require you safe drivers or an alternative transportation is not in the business plan. So those would be things that we would need to condition.
Also, doors being shut after a certain time. I don't see a problem with that because uh usually the music would come on after the wedding.
Yeah.
And then it, before the wedding, you'd want the doors open for the view. And then after the wedding would make sense if they could close the doors.
Yeah. What, I think that was seven P M at the decibel level requirement changes. Would it make sense to add a, doors closed after seven P M?
Don't forget to stipulate no outdoor music, cause right now we just have them saying that.
The no outdoor music is stipulated in their, um,
It says music.
In their.
Second one.
Yeah, it is in their business plan, which they would be uh required to fall, you know, follow based on their application.
Even wedding, the ceremonies that are taking place outside? No business, no music for the outdoor ceremonies?
Then it says the music provider will be located inside the barn.
No cocker bells wedding march?
Yeah, that's, that's the question. No outdoor music means no outdoor music.
Question for staff.
Stipulated.
Yeah, and if it changes hands, is the business plan uh
permanent expired, right?
Well, no.
That would be a change to the.
The benefit of using business plans instead of lease.
Right.
If they made any changes, a modification or not.
To come to us again.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other items on that? Does anyone feel ready to make a motion or do we need to hash out some language or take a two minute break for someone to hash out language?
Can we put up the conditions? Add the, with the issues so he can look at those and decide if we need more conversation based on this.
There's condition one.
I will send them to you.
And then I'd say it's good. Can we look at condition two? Of the other conditions I think are, yeah. Are there any further besides those four? I don't know. Yeah, they go to five, they go through nine. That's on page sixteen of the agenda packet. Also, the.
Like I know the answer to the question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Is there any way you'd be willing to move where the parking lot is off that plane?
It would not make sense realistically to be able to keep farming the majority of the uh land if we move the parking lot uh from where it is to the other side of the venue. Plus, the other side of the venue is the whole reason we have that barn positioned where it is for the view of the mountains for the wedding party. Uh, it just makes perfect sense to have that parking lot where it is.
Yeah, thank you so much. I think your biggest middle finger to us.
Ma'am, I would ask you to refrain from engaging with the applicant. Could we condition a reduction in the parking spaces to accommodate a private, you know, a privacy fence that doesn't impede safety of the road?
You wouldn't need to reduce it. Oh, yeah, without the privacy fence, you wouldn't need to reduce.
If we reduce the number of uh parking spots, the fence could come farther into the property. Um.
Uh, that would just be throwing land out by the road. It wouldn't make sense, really.
Other than for a public safety concern.
Well, if, if we needed to reduce the parking lot size, I wouldn't take it away from uh I would move spaces closer to the uh to the road on both sides. I wouldn't move the fence into the parking lot. Uh, we could use that property uh for landscaping instead of uh just losing it to the other side of the privacy fence.
Can you put up the land plot thing and show us what he started him up?
Does county engineering have any specs?
Yeah. Can he show us what he started?
Line of sight or anything like that around.
So there are line of sight standards.
Hey.
Um, those standards would be based in the traffic standard. So when, when they do line of sight for driveways accesses, they do have line of sight requirements. And there is the right of way um issue, like why, why we have to clean the right of way of certain trees and stuff. Um, one of the things that hasn't been brought up is maybe a little, if we call it light mitigation apparatus, because we don't have fencing controls and landing scale. So, a four foot fence with headlights, you still have the sight over the top, just throwing it out there. Um, because I, I feel that what we, we keep focusing on the word fence, and this is a light mitigation technique.
Yeah.
So I would call it like a light screening. A lower fence line will not obstruct that line of sight at car height if you're talking a four foot fence, which is then above the headlights.
So if his ten-foot fence was reduced to a four-foot fence.
I think it fixes the line of sight issue.
And the ten-foot, I think he was throwing out there as try, as an attempt to appease neighbors of the issues that they've brought up. Um, could our condition say something like, like, eh, maybe even in the same line as the other light mitigations, light mitigation? Um.
Screen.
Screening.
Yeah.
Will be placed around the parking lot so as to reduce headlight.
Intrusion.
Intrusion into neighboring. Properties.
If a truck has a four-foot tall headlight, there's nothing you're gonna do about it.
We considered trees also, but they need to be watered without a fence, with being no.
Same, same sideline.
And she didn't wanna see the parking lot either. It is a considerable cost to us to put this fence up. It could be over fifty thousand easy. It also looks to me like.
Light, okay, screen, shielding screen. Mitigation.
Light mitigation. But it appears that you could cut the corner of that parking lot off and push the parking lot towards the leach field drawing to regain the lost parking spaces. Just, it just appears that that can be, I don't know. I think we just need to ensure that there's light mitigation on the parking lot. It prevents light from, how do you determine it? How do we say it for the hooded lights that we have? Not to shine into, uh, the neighbor's property.
Uh, language, light pollution mitigation screening will be placed around the parking lot, totally be headlights and neighboring line of sight.
Yeah.
Been trying to send an email for like four minutes.
Can we limit it?
Do you have a weapon?
No.
What do you do?
Light mitigation screens tend to get taller to fit the purpose.
I, I think if you use the words light mitigation device, you can put a height to it. That would be the most effective to avoid any line of sight issues with engineering side.
Maybe we just add, eh, any light mitigation shall be approved by county engineering to ensure line of sight on the road.
No, just avoid fence. We don't have any fence. The word fence isn't in the land use code.
Well, minimal height to, uh, ensure light mitigation. Leave the maximum out, though. Neighborhoods are what, six feet standard? Step on a corner, then they're down to four feet?
Yeah, I mean, how, how would the county address it? I mean, what, you know, what does the county do to address it? Throw this event venue out of the, uh, out the window. It's a private residence that puts up a privacy fence around their property.
Yeah, as, as a general rule, if that privacy fence is outside of our right-of-way, again, this is where I keep focusing on the word fence. We have no fencing restrictions within the land use code, whereas you guys can describe light mitigation screening in a different fashion.
But the county wouldn't, so you put a twelve-foot fence up, now we can't see around that corner.
If it's out of our right-of-way.
But we, I don't, yeah.
I, it seems logical to me to have county engineering, you know, um, approve of it as not, you know, preventing line of sight around the corner. I, I think that's the best you can do. I just was checking out the roadway regulations. I don't, they think line of sight is in the construction of roads, not in construction of fences, of existing roads. So there's not regulations really that I can find immediately here to address this kind of a situation.
And is anyone ready to make a motion?
Lance, are you ready?
You know, I don't be.
Yeah.
I think Jacob has got it all lined out down there, doesn't he?
I have one version of it. I think Lance has another version. I mean, I move, we deny the application. It is not in alignment with the land use code, section two A, one B, and section two B, one C.
Okay, can you say those? Two A, one. Two A.
Section two A, one B. And section two B, one C.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
There was a second, Lance.
All right, there is a motion, a second to deny this deny approval of this application based on chapter one, section two A, one B, and section two B, one C of the land use code. All in favor? Oh, yeah, discussion, yeah.
Here's my concern with this. The character of the area is very subjective. Who defines what the character of the area is? You're gonna get a different answer from every single person that lives in this area, what the character of the area is. Who decides what that is, and whether this event in this application is changing that character? And so, I, I appreciate that. I, I just, I, I went and drove that area. And, uh, a-again, I'm fully in support of this type of business. Nothing else out there like it at all. It's all rural, it's all farms and ranches. But Pod says generator of business. And, uh, and I guess my, the thing that I worry about, uh, and that's why I'm making this motion for this, is that, uh, if, if this gets approved, it's essentially permanent. You know what I mean? This, you can't go back and change the character of that neighborhood. And, and I've seen that in other areas where I feel like we, not, not we as the planning commission per se, but, uh, that, that gets, um, pushed onto those neighborhoods, and then it's changed forever. And there's appropriate places for this business in our county. I just don't think it fits here.
Well, is that actually a neighborhood, or is it just a conglomeration of, uh, homes out there?
Didn't, we just, we went through this with another wedding event.
Longhorns and Lice.
I don't know where it was, but the same concerns, the same neighborhood. And you're only gonna, eh, eh, that's why I can't distinguish this one from that one. Which was approved.
Yeah.
And they, and, yeah, I guess that's the thing. And, and it's the same thing with the the Connaught Creek batch plant was, those people didn't like the noise and the dirt and everything else that was in their neighborhood, and they all moved there to live in the country and thought it would stay that way forever. I mean, that's that's progress. And I'm, I guess I'm of the feeling we gotta be somewhat consistent.
I, I would tend to agree. I, I think this is one of the trickiest places where this is a type of business that's not so clearly out of character. You know, by some definitions, it's agritourism. It keeps a lot of the land in agriculture. By some definitions, it's a major change to the area. There are other commercial businesses, you know, in that section of Rogers Mesa, um. And the way, yeah, I think it is tricky. Does anyone? Anyone else have compelling argument you'd like to make before we vote?
We've had the, yeah, we have to take a vote now.
Yeah. All right, all in favor of denying this application, denying recommendation to the board of county commissioners? Uh, let's do a clear raise your hand. Two votes in favor. Maze? One, two, three, four. Okay, motion fails? Next motion.
Uh, move, we approve, um, twenty-four dash zero fifty-seven, uh, Davis, with, um, staff's conditions in addition to, uh, conditions that I have since sent to Brittany, but I will, um, say them again, and we will get them for the record. Uh, condition one, that light, uh, there be light pollution mitigation screening will be placed around the parking lot to mitigate headlights into neighboring line of sight. Condition two, the prohibition of fireworks in property. Condition three, restrictions of events to nine AM to ten PM. Uh, condition four, require language regarding responsible driver provision. Uh, condition five, barn doors be closed after seven PM. And condition six, no hard liquor on the premises, um, like yourself or more, maybe. That is my motion.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I would move to amend the motion to limit the hours of operation from nine AM to nine PM.
Hey, remind us of the rules.
Is there a second on that motion?
Is there a second on the emotion to, the motion to amend the hours to nine PM? There is no second, seeing that. There is a motion and a second, uh, any added conversation we want to have before voting on this motion? No conversation. Let's vote. Uh, all in favor? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed. One. All right, motion passes to approve this application with staff conditions and additional conditions. Uh, next, this application will move to the board of county commissioners. They will make the final decision. Uh, they can also put on their own conditions. Um, again, we really thank the members of the public. We wanna let you know we did take your considerations seriously, and we hope that this is the best compromise, uh, to keep your neighborhood safe and your lives relatively unentrusted.
Wanna buy my house? I'm ready.
If I had money to buy a house on Rogers Mesa?
I'd buy it.
With that, we're gonna move on.
You have more on your agenda?
We do not have any other items on the agenda. I just wanted to check with the staff, see if they're.
Pisses me off, but I'm, I'm not that kind of a loser, thanks. Just out in your backyard. To not just say that's the general saying, right?
Uh, and I will, I've got.
Good for listening. Good to see you. Thank you. Thanks for getting it conditional on this negotiation. That, that really changed everything. All right, please consider that going forward. It has no discussion, or we just be, you know, with the limited. By never getting before anybody in negotiating with these conditions, I have just, I mean, that's really difficult. I think that was the biggest fear factor. Thanks for looking at the feedback. All right, thank you, sir. Sorry, I got a little high with the physical charts.
Or can you prelate anything from the staff?
I just wanna say thank you to you all. Like I said, we're, we're. Very hard on, you know, neighbors. Really great input comments. Very impressed with all of you. I felt. I like screen, you know, for.
Our company charter, uh, supplement and make recommendations on that experience of those changes. You talking to dad out there about the bar? That we're clarifying, but I just don't win that. Our meeting is even more versatile. You know, so.
I have a running list of those, and I have a list from the last time. There hasn't been.
Yeah, and one of these months that we perhaps don't have anything on the agenda, we should probably have a, a work session just to kind of review those things in light of the applications that have come up recently. Um, Lance, you can also, right now, in agenda item F, commissioner comments, request and referrals, a request or refer matter that's not on the agenda for future consideration.
When we don't have a scheduled hearing.
Um, yes, unless there's any other commissioners that want to make comment, request, or referral.